Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Will everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by Chapel Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and our stakeholders this morning as we make important decisions for this county. Lord, I am thankful for all of the citizens and leaders that are here to be recognized this morning, especially those outstanding young people that we have in the room today to be recognized. Lord, this morning I ask for special blessings for the community of Charlotte and for the students, families, faculty, and staff at UNC Charlotte in the wake of the tragedy there. And Lord, it's always the first responders that are there immediately in the aftermath of these types of situations, so as always, I pray for our first responders, that you will guide them and keep them safe and comfort them each and every day. I ask for all these blessings and give all these thanks in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Before we get started, I have a memo to read into the records from Commissioner Hagan. It says, "Please be advised that due to a previously scheduled appointment, I'll be arriving late to today's BLCC meeting." Please read the reason for my late arrival into the record. Thank you. The first thing we have on the agenda is I'm going to do a recognition. These ladies are dressed in red, and Commissioner Merman is dressed in red because she wants to be one.[211.15][211.15](Laughter). Maybe I can make an honorary member. Every year she comes dressed in red. Are the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, a member of what we call the Divine Nine, Divine Nine of the predominantly African-American fraternity and sororities in the world, and they're here for their 13th, their 13th day of Deltas at the county center. And they're here for a busy day of visiting different offices and finding out what we do here in Hillsborough County. So I'm going to ask them to please stand. Let me read something briefly. It's a private, not-for-profit organization, a sisterhood of predominantly black college-educated women, whose purpose is to provide assistance and support through established programs and local communities throughout, throughout the world. And I mean throughout the world they do this. So today we have with us ladies from the Tampa Alumni Chapter. Their president is Alicia Warren. Where is she? And the ladies from the Tampa Alumni Chapter. We have the president, Cornell Williams, from the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chapter. We have Martine Gibson, who is a representative from the Kappa Iota Chapter, Miami Memorial University of South Florida, and Sabrina Griffin, president of the Tar Iota Chapter at the University of Tampa. So we want to welcome you all to county center. We hope you have a great, great day. I had the opportunity to speak with them this morning. They had some very, very tough questions. There's one lady now, I think, probably running for county commission pretty soon. I'm not going to call her name, but she knows who I'm talking about because she had some difficult questions this morning. But thank you for being here. We truly appreciate it. If you get an opportunity to say something to Commissioner Merman and tell her how she can join, I think she'll appreciate it.[304.33][304.33](Laughter) Thank you.[306.83][306.83](Applause). Okay.[312.12][312.12](Laughter). We're going to move now into the, to Year Awards. It's my pleasure to, our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of six outstanding young people today with the Board of County Commissioners Youth Excellence and Achievement Awards, also called the Year Awards. This is the ninth year of the program, which was created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas like academics, community service, athletics, and performing arts. The county commission, the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women selects these year, this year's winners, and we appreciate their work. The members of the commission on the Status of Women, please stand and let's recognize you. These, these ladies do an outstanding job, not only for the selection of the Year Award recipients, but many issues in this county, and they do it free of charge. And we appoint them to those positions and the other organizations they belong to. So on behalf of this commission, we want to thank you very much for your work. Thank you very much. At this time, Commissioner Kemp will explain what the awards are and recognize the first recipient. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you.[380.12][380.12](Pause) So I happen to wear red today totally intentionally.
Why didn't see the red bottom?
Good morning this morning. All of our six honorees have demonstrated a special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are critical for the next generation of leaders. Too often, it's the worst examples of teen behavior that are displayed and get attention on the internet and the news, as we all know, although I'm very excited about the new generation coming forward, while young people who excel and do good deeds are unnoticed. We're taking a different approach here in our boardroom. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of the community through strong leadership and determined action will shape our future. This board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging their efforts. So today, we're celebrating the next generation with the Year Awards. There are three categories: success despite difficult odds, leadership, and volunteer and community service. One award in each category goes to a high school student, and one award in each is presented to a middle school recipient. So I'm now going to present the first award. The Year Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and to have a positive impact on others. I'd like to call Naomi Weller and her family to please come forward. If you can stand here. You have to be so proud of Naomi. Naomi, who attends Progress Village Middle Magnet School of Arts in Tampa, has endured more challenges in her 12 years than many adults. She and her family experienced periods of homelessness due to unforeseen circumstances. Throughout it all, Naomi rose above the challenges and excelled. She was on the principal's honor roll most of her grade school years at Mintz Elementary in Tampa. At Progress Village Middle School, she ranks first in her science class, is taking seventh grade math while in the sixth grade, and is a mainstay on the principal's honor roll. Last year, Naomi served, earned a certificate of achievement from the governor's office for her outstanding performance on the fifth grade statewide test. Congratulations. She is also in the band, according to her mom, Eats, Breathes, and Sleeps Gymnastics. Naomi, who wants to be a commercial interior designer when she grows up, provides a wonderful lesson. No matter the circumstances, if you keep working and stay true to yourself, you can succeed. Naomi, I'm happy that things are going well for you and your family now, and I'm thrilled to award you the middle school Yay Award in the success despite difficult odds category. Much congratulations to you and your family. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, no, thank you.
Aw, we're, we're all waiting.[614.16][614.16](Laughter). You can say one sentence.
Thank you very much for this award.
And if we can take a photo, we'll all just line up.
Yeah. 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 Thanks.[636.54][636.54](Laughter).
It's my pleasure to call up Blake Jarvis and her family to join me at the podium. A senior at Middleton High School, Blake is another example of how inner strength, optimism, and special type of perseverance can overcome a challenging event. As a result of circumstances that were beyond her control, Blake was without a permanent residence throughout her entire high school career, but she never allowed her situation to negatively influence her personality, goals, and dreams. Blake focused her energy toward academic and athletic excellence. In addition to being a member of the Middleton Scholarship Club, she achieved a 4.3 unweighted GPA. I never thought about getting that.[745.32][745.32](Laughter) And is now eighth in her class. Because of her superior academics, she's been awarded full scholarship to Benedict College in South Carolina.[760.12][760.12](Applause). As a leading rebounder and co-captain of the girls' basketball team, Blake combines her infectious enthusiasm and positive demeanor to become a true leader for her classmates. Best of all, she can celebrate these accomplishments with her beloved uncle and aunt, who are here with her dad. Her aunt, her uncle, is former state representative in the rain. In recognition of her hard work and unwavering tenacity, Blake Jarvis is a high school recipient of the Year Award in the success despite difficult odds category. Blake, congratulations. And the best to you.[802.51][802.51](Applause).
Good morning. I would like to thank the county commissioners and everyone who led me to achieve this award. I am both astonished and extremely grateful to be here today. It has been, it has been a long, challenging road, but with the help of God, I managed. Just imagine your mother passing away unexpectedly, then being taken away from your grandparents, brothers, sisters, and friends without warning, to a city seven hours away to move with your father and his married, who is married, and their family, some of you've never even met before. Not to mention, it hasn't even been a month, so you're still grieving around people you barely know. It's very overwhelming. That was me seven years ago. It was the most difficult time of my life, but with determination and a dream to be successful, I overcame many adversities that were placed in my path. Thankfully, God placed many angels in disguise to guide me through life and keep me on the right path. Every time I wanted to give up, they were there to lift me up in the form of teachers, guidance counselors, mentors, cousins, friends, coaches, et cetera, to protect and guide me to this point in my life. As a reward for my faith, I became part of the National Honor Society, basketball team captain, and offered a four-year scholarship.
Congratulations.
The Year Award recipient in leadership category demonstrated positive impact on others in an ongoing environment such as sports, academics, and arts. Would Gabriella Daniels and her family please come forward? Gabriella is a seventh grader who is homeschooled and also attends Trinity Academy. Six years ago, when she was just seven, Gabriella read a book entitled Children Like Me, which is about young people from all over the world. Gabriella noticed that some of the children didn't have shoes, and it bothered her. She asked her mom, who explained that these children faced certain hardships that Gabriella and many of her friends did not. Gabriella then decided she wanted to use her piggy bank money to help those children. That simple act of kindness has grown into a global initiative of love. Gabriella founded Children for Children Ministries to help children in need in Ethiopia. Thanks to Gabriella's generous donations, Children for Children Ministry has raised more than $15,000. The money has helped establish an after-school program, constructed building, and two outdoor playgrounds, and provided snacks and activities. Children for Children Ministries is now partnering with Jewish Voice Ministries International to help provide for needs of children in Africa. Once more, Gabriella is encouraging other local children her age to join her in truly making a difference in other young lives. Gabriella, it's incredible that you find time to do all of this when you're so busy with your schoolwork. I also hear you're busy with your 14 pet chickens, (Laughter) two ducks, a dog, a guinea pig, and a betta fish. No wonder you want to be a veterinarian when you grow up.[1053.24][1053.24](Laughter). You have demonstrated tremendous leadership and initiative in working to help these children in need. That is why you're the middle school recipient of the Year Award in leadership category. Congratulations, and would you like to say a few words? And here's your word.[1067.58][1067.58](Applause).
I'd like to thank the county commissioner, Mr. Elberton, Rabbi Steve, and my parents, and especially God for this opportunity. It has been a long journey to get to where I am, but I thank God every day for it because I feel so blessed that I can help these children who have not even half of what we have, that we are so blessed to have what we have. And my goal after, to get to, is I would like to take a group of tween and teens on a mission trip to Africa, as well as have them join me in raising money to help, help collect more money and get them more schools in a safer area to sleep and have clean water. Clean water is a very big deal there. They don't have water, so thank you for this award.[1128.58][1128.58](Applause).
Thank you, Chairman Miller. I'd like to ask Christopher Rodriguez and his family to please come forward. A junior at Plant City High School, Christopher ranks 12th in a class of 530 juniors. He's a member of the academic honor roll, National Honor Society, and is enrolled, and is enrolled in advanced placement courses and dual-enrolled at Hillsborough Community College, a phenomenal academic powerhouse indeed. There are many qualities that make a good leader: enthusiasm, clarity of vision, exuberant energy, and the ability to multitask. Christopher has demonstrated incredible leadership abilities as captain of the junior varsity football, baseball, and basketball teams. In addition to serving as chair of the Interact Social Media Club, he was elected junior class president. Chris is also known for his giving heart. He volunteered for Hurricane Irma preparations and cleanup efforts, as well as collecting donations for Team Santa, which uses all the proceeds to purchase toys for a local food bank. Christopher combines his leadership and volunteer skills to serve as captain for Relay for Life and Team Two Marrow, which helps register potential donors for the National Bone Marrow Registry. These are amazing accomplishments, and it is no surprise that Christopher Rodriguez was chosen as the high school recipient of the Year Award in the leadership category. Christopher, your generous actions speak volumes, and that's what makes you a good leader. I'd like to congratulate you and present you with your award and ask you to say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you.
You bet. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank the whole county commissioner and everyone for being here today, and I also want to thank my parents and my family for pushing me to be the person that I am today. And being a high school student, it's tough to balance a social life with academics and sports, especially when you play a lot, but especially when you want to be a leader and be an example for all of those that are behind you to play. And I enjoy doing that, and I enjoy setting an example for everyone behind me and below me, and I continually do that. And with Team Tamarrow, I really find joy in that because when everyone thinks of bone marrow, they think of it as hurt, as it hurts really bad, but it really doesn't, and that's why I like to inform people so that we can get people on the registry, because the more people we have, the more chances we have to save a life. And we've actually beat the odds because, beat a match says one in 500 people are a match, and we have had two out of the 330 that we have registered. And one happened to be my brother, and he did donate and potentially saved a man's
Commissioner Kemp will present our next Year Award.
I'm just really overwhelmed with so much hope and inspiration in this room this morning. Thank you all so much. The Year Award recipients in the volunteer or community service category give their time to make life better for others. I'd like to ask Vance Tomasi and his family to join me at the podium. Vance is a seventh grader at Farnell Middle School in Tampa who firmly believes that reading is the key to success. He also knows that it isn't easy for everybody to get books. As a result, two and a half years ago, he and his best friend started an initiative called Read Repeat. Vance has collected, donated, and distributed, this is a big number, more than 92,000 books to 50 states, and raised $28,000.[1502.71][1502.71](Applause). Locally, he partnered with Hillsborough County Public Schools to donate more than, again, a big number, 55,000 books to local students and classroom libraries. Thanks to a $25,000 grant from the Tampa Lightning, Tampa Bay Lightning Foundation, he purchased books for struggling third graders attending the school system's summer reading camps last year. Most recently, he was awarded a micro grant to purchase books that emphasize diversity so minority students can see themselves in the books they read. In addition, Vance, who performs more than 200 hours of volunteer service a year, has helped stock the libraries at Joshua House and Hope Children's Home. Vance has been widely recognized for his work and dedication. He's been named a Lightning Community Hero of Tomorrow, received the Presidential Environmental Youth Award, and was honored with the Florida Champion of Service Award. These are really amazing accomplishments for any 13-year-old. It's, it's a long history you already have, and I have, there's, to me, there's nothing more important for any young person, for any one of us, than to have the world of reading opened up to us and to have books to inspire and cherish and learn from, and it's, it's a great mission that you're on. And Vance has even bigger plans. He wants, he's not satisfied yet.[1603.01][1603.01](Laughter). He wants to study medicine and save lives. His drive to help others makes him this year's Yay Award winner in the middle school volunteer or community service category, and this is the award. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Yay.[1629.61][1629.61](Laughter).
Yeah.[1631.61][1631.61](Laughter). First off, I'd like to thank Hillsborough County Commissioners for recognizing my community service with the Youth Excellence and Achievement Award for the category of volunteerism in the middle school level. A little over two years ago, my best friend and I started this project called Read Repeat. We wanted to get books into the hands of kids, and the community was so helpful in us doing that. We partnered with Hillsborough County Schools and friends of Maureen Gazzola Public Library, and we've been able to make an impact in so many people's lives, especially kids. Now I'm over the moon to announce that we're almost to our goal of 100,000 books. I'd like to thank my parents and my three little brothers for helping me collect, sort, and deliver all those thousands of books. It's an honor to receive this award and be surrounded by kids in our county doing great things.
And to help is, and we'll, we'll take a picture.
We'll send you copies. You should go in.[1698.51][1698.51](Laughter).
That's the picture. That's security.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, and this is a very exciting day for us to recognize all these outstanding youth. Wow, it's great to hear the stories. And this one, I'm proud to present because I know this family very well, and I'd like to ask them to come forward, Grace Ramos and her family. If y'all would like to come forward, her sisters and...[1757.83][1757.83](Applause). They are neighbors of mine, and I remember when her, Grace's mom knocked on my door and to see if I would be interested in helping Grace with her projects, so I couldn't be happier to present this award today. Let me tell you a little bit about Grace. She is a junior at HB Plant High School. She has accomplished so much in her very young life. She was class president in the eighth grade. She's a member of the National Junior Honor Society and a current member of the National Honor Society and Beta Societies. Grace is in the top... Grace is in the top 6% in her class, which is in a big, you're in a big school, so that's a big achievement. She's vice president of her service club, she's captain of the girls' track team, and was chosen by her coach as a positive coaching alliance representative for her team. If y'all don't know much about that program, it's a great program that's helping kids that are involved with athletics. And of course, she is only 16. Although she has many interests, her number-one passion is the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida. Yay! Next month, you know, after being a Girl Scout myself and a Girl Scout leader, and my daughter's a Girl Scout, it really is, it just all comes home. Next month, after 11 years in scouting, Grace will be presented the Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouts. Her projects dealt with human trafficking. She created an informational poster that is displayed in every Hillsborough County high school and is available to all 67 Florida superintendents via the Florida Department of Education website. In addition, Grace was a speaker of the National Roundtable on Safeguarding Children and Prevention Education in Washington, DC, where her project was listed on the 2018 Florida Attorney General's statewide report on human trafficking. Again, ladies and gentlemen, she is only 16, and she is making a difference in our nation. For her accomplishments, yay! For her accomplishments, Grace Ramos is the Yay Award High School recipient in the Volunteer or Community Service category, and I'd like to present you with this award and just say, Grace, your service to others has had an incredible impact on Hillsborough County. I want to congratulate you, and thank you. I'd like to say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you so much to the Board of County Commissioners and to the Commission on the Status of Women for this wonderful Yay Award. I am honored and humbled to be chosen for the work I have done with my Girl Scout Gold Award project tackling human trafficking awareness in Hillsborough County high schools. I would first like to thank April Griffin for nominating me for this special award. Mrs. Griffin embraced my project fully and even encouraged me to go beyond Hillsborough County high schools in my awareness efforts. She was also instrumental in putting me into contact with Ms. Dottie Grover-Skepper. I'd like to thank Dottie Grover-Skepper and Natasha Nascimento for their help and for being some of the best mentors who helped me learn so much about human trafficking. Last but not least, I'd like to thank Holly Seiya and Leslie Carrero for their help in creating the beautiful poster that was the focus of my project. Starting my project, I didn't know much about human trafficking, but once I did, it sparked an idea that if I didn't know much about it, surely my peers didn't either, and that's how I decided I wanted to focus on human trafficking awareness in high schools. With my project, I put human trafficking posters in all Hillsborough County high schools via distribution to each high school's social worker. Along with distribution, the poster, the poster is also put on the Florida Department of Education website, where a printable version is currently available for any other institutions who may want to use it. It is my hope that with more awareness in high schools and in the general community, human trafficking will become less prominent in the state of Florida. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I want to congratulate all the young leaders on behalf of, again, the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you for all that you do and all that you continue to do to make Hillsborough County a great place for all of us to live, work, and play. Each of you is a point of pride in our community, and we look forward to the good works you will accomplish as you grow into adulthood. However, when you leave and go off to college, if you leave Hillsborough County, when you graduate, come home. We need you here to do the great work that you're doing. And at this time, I would like to invite all the Yay Award winners to take a group photo with the board, so would you please come forward, all the winners? This concludes our Hillsborough County 2019 Yay Award. Winners, we want to say again, thank you so very much. We're now moving to the presentation of proclamations, and the next proclamation will be presented by Commissioner White.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. I, if it's okay, I'll just let the room clear out for a moment. Okay, well, as we all know, water safety is incredibly important here in the state of Florida, and it's timely that we're going to be talking about this because we're heading into the summer months, and we live in a paradise where folks are going to be drawn to the water. In just a moment, I'll be calling some folks up with Water Smart Tots Incorporated, and I'll just say that since their inception in 2014, Water Smart Tots has raised over $60,000 to fund their scholarship program and has provided specialized survival swim scholarships for one-on-one self-rescue lessons to approximately 250 under-deserved children ages 1 to 6 years in the Tampa Bay area. Water Smart Tots has also provided in-classroom water safety education to more than 2,200 preschoolers in the Bay Area. New for 2019, Water Smart Tots will be implementing a new program called Every Family Water Smart, which encompasses reaching local families before their children reach the water. So at this time, I'd like to call up some special guests. Carrie Bahor, Water Smart Tots President; Kami Yick, Water Smart Tots Vice President; Rebecca Goodman, Water Smart Tots Secretary, if she's with us today; Andrew Yick, which is a Water Smart Tots board member; Michelle Sterling with Safe Kids; Christine Rover with USF Center for Autism, Safe Kids Board Member; and Commissioner Merman, after that Women's Final Four proclamation that we've recently done, not to be outdone, I have Josh the Otter mascot with me. Welcome, Josh the Otter. Great to see you. Yeah, that's worth a round of applause. So I would like to present this special proclamation to you and read it into the record and invite any of you up to the podium to make remarks. The proclamation reads, "Whereas every year in the United States, about 4,000 people die from drowning, the second-leading cause of death of children ages 1 to 4. That's according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas drowning is the leading cause of accidental death of children ages 1 to 4, according to the National Drowning Prevention Alliance. And whereas Florida ranks first in the nation in these tragic and preventable deaths. And whereas Hillsborough County ranks first in the state in these tragic and preventable deaths. And whereas 11 children died from drowning in Hillsborough County in 2018, more than the previous 2 years combined. And whereas drowning incidents can take only seconds, and anyone with a child needs to be vigilant whenever the child is in the water or near the water. And a water watcher should always be designated, as 88% of child drownings occur when at least one adult is present. And whereas it is essential that children receive swimming lessons and other safety education, and that pools and spas are secured with fencing and alarm systems to stop curious children from wandering into danger. And whereas drowning prevention is a community responsibility that should include collaborative efforts across Hillsborough County to dramatically reduce the number of pediatric drownings. And whereas Hillsborough County recognizes Water Smart Tots Incorporated for teaching the community about water safety through numerous initiatives, including preschool presentations and scholarships for one-on-one survival swim lessons to children ages 1 to 6 whose families cannot afford them. And Water Smart Tots encourages children over the age of 6 to enroll in Red Cross swim lessons. And whereas Water Smart Tots Incorporated also supports ongoing efforts by other agencies and organizations to provide a multi-layered approach to stop the pediatric drowning epidemic. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2019 as Water Safety Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to ensure that children know how to swim, learn aquatic survival skills, and are water smart." Executed today, the 1st of May, signed by all 7 commissioners, I just want to thank each and every one of you for what you do on behalf of our kids and particularly their safety. Thank you. You bet. Anybody who'd like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the recognition for our efforts. When you live in a county in the state of Florida that has the highest number of drownings for children under age 4, we believe drowning becomes everybody's responsibility. It's the efforts of the community, many organizations, it's the unity of the community coming together and promote awareness and drowning prevention. The efforts of Water Smart Tots, we've been successful because of many people, not just one person, and I just want to thank the entire community who has helped us and supported us and believed in our mission to ensure not one more child drowns. Thank you.
Before, Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to especially thank you for your work. As you pointed out, our drowning rate in Hillsborough County doubled. Just such a tragedy, but I was struck by the other night. I saw a story, and I think it was out of Pinellas County where parents brought their toddler kayaking, a wonderful thing to do that I do with my children, but that child had no vest on, life vest on, and ended up drowning. So if communicating that story to one person here today or anyone else saves a life of a child, it would be worth it to make sure that everybody is thinking about that when they bring their children on the water.
Sorry, I'd like to include that last year, the statistics for drowning, we had, Hillsborough County alone had 11 children under the age of 4 who lost their lives. At the same time, this year, we've only had one, which is sad to even lose one life, but it is a drastic reduction in the number of pediatric drownings.
Commissioner Merman will present the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner White, for keeping the otter under control. We had an unruly duck here one day, so for those of you that weren't here, just, it's kind of an inside thing. But very, very proud to present this proclamation today. It's to a very fast-growing segment of our population, and it's the Asian-Pacific-American segment of our population. Today, I'd like to ask them to come forward, the Tampa National Association of Asian-American Professionals. Man Lee is the president and founder, if you'd like to come forward. The Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Tampa Bay, Sunny Duon, she's the chamber president. Philippines community, Jose Omerla, Vice Chairman of the Board of the Philippine Cultural Foundation Incorporated. Hung Mai from the Vietnamese community. The Taiwanese community, Robert Chen, Taiwanese Chamber of Commerce of North America, the Tampa chapter. And just ask you all to come forward, and of course, you want the queen to come forward. Come forward. Okay, Anne, she's, represents the community very well. So I'm going to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month was first established by the United States Congress in 1978, honoring the contributions Asian-Pacific-Americans have made in the sciences, the arts, industry, government, and commerce, and originally encompassed the first 10 days of May. Whereas in 1992, Congress extended the observance of Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month to include the entire month of May. Whereas the Hillsborough County has a large population of Asian-Pacific-Americans who are, whose origins include Cambodia, China, India, Indonesia, Japan, North and South Korea, Philippines, Singapore, Thailand, and Vietnam. And whereas in 2012, the Board of County Commissioners approved the creation of the Hillsborough County Diversity Advisory Council, which ensures that the diverse needs of the county's residents are identified and communicated to the government and community at large. Whereas the council's membership is representative of the county's different cultures, including African-American, Caribbean, Far East Asian, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, Hispanic, Indian, Asian, Middle Eastern, Native American, Northern and Southern European, and people with disabilities. Whereas the Asian-Pacific-Americans bring to Hillsborough County a vibrant diversity representing many languages, ethnicities, traditions, religions, and enrich residents' lives daily by sharing ideas, customs, and wisdom. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2019 as Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, encourages all residents to join the Hillsborough County Diversity Advisory Council in celebrating the numerous positive impacts Asian-Pacific-Americans have made to the community and maintaining strong communication between neighbors of diverse cultures." And so proud to present this, who am I presenting this to? You're the representative. Okay, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Mike Marrow and Kristen Back. It's an honor, you know, for us to be here with your leadership, with your wisdom, and with your, you know, vision. I know in 2012, the Board of County Commissioners created the DAC, which was, I am a member, and I have the privilege to chair for about 3 years, and the DAC is still, you know, as this- as is today, and that is a good thing, that the county, we appreciate, you know, Hillborough County is a diverse, you know, county, and we appreciate, you know, you including us, the inclusion of our group in the community. With your permission, I would like to ask, you know, all the members of the Asian community coming up here, and I would like to yield, you know, my time for each of the group, if they can make, you know, a remark, plus about the Chinese community.
Hi, good morning, my name is Sunny Duan, it's very honored to be here with all our Asian community representatives and participants. This is a great day for proclamation for our Asian community in Hillsborough County, and it's just very, very happy to be here. Thank you.
Hello, just want to again thank you for the Board of Commissioners for recognizing Asian American Heritage Month, and just want to look forward to our continued partnership in the community. Thank you.
I thank all the Commissioners for declaring this as the Asian Month, because also we're very proud to be part of Hillsborough County. The Philippines is now very proud to be recognized as the biggest Philippine festival in Hillsborough County in the entire USA, with 12,000 last April attendance alone. So we are visible to Hillsborough County. Thank you so much.
I want to thank Commissioners for hosting and the proclamation, and that we are here, and we love the Hillsborough County, and we love to involve with the community and give back to the community as well. Thank you.
Father, father from the DIOC of St. Peterburg.
Go.
Congratulations.
All right. If you all want to take a picture. Here, somebody's got a whole mess. Okay. All push it out. Sorry, you don't stand there. I guess. Here, turn sideways so you don't fit in. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I came here four years ago.
Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. Okay, good to see you. I'll present the next proclamation. I'm going to ask the members of the Hillsborough County Community Action Board that are here, better known as CAB, that'll come forward, and staff members, Ms. Audrey Ziegler, and any other staff members you have with you, please come forward. Good morning, how are you doing? Good morning, how are you? Morning, how are you doing? Morning. Oh, okay. Good morning. Good morning, Audrey. The month of May is designated as Community Action Month to celebrate local community action agencies for the work they do in the fight to assist low-income families to achieve economic self-sufficiency. Hillsborough County Community Action Board, better known as CAB, members demonstrate their dedication year-round to volunteer work in their individual communities throughout Hillsborough County. The Community Action Board's mission statement is Hillsborough County Community Action Board partners with community stakeholders to stabilize and empower vulnerable individuals and families to achieve self-sufficiency through advocacy and essential services. CAB members work with social service staff to assist eligible low-income individuals and families to cover tuition costs for industry certification programs such as firefighters, EMTs, award multiple post-secondary scholarships to youth between the ages of 17 and 22, provide summer educational enrichment opportunities to youth between the ages of 12 and 17, assist and motivate individuals and families in the family empowerment program, achieve financial independence by providing case management along with financial assistance to support and customize case plan, support advisory councils with annual projects, as well as numerous other activities of addressing poverty in Hillsborough County. And again, they do this on their own voluntary time, and appointed by the Board and others, so it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to the Community Action Agency in their recognition and reach. Whereas, Community Action Agencies have been fighting poverty since 1964, when they were created as a part of the United States Economic Opportunity Act. And whereas Community Action Agencies put a human face on poverty, it helps residents with lower income become self-sufficient, uplift neighborhoods, and ensure all people are able to live with dignity. And whereas the agencies are working with the state of Florida to guide reform of the welfare system, a partnership which enhances both entities and benefits Hillsborough County residents. And whereas Community Action Agencies contribute to Hillsborough County's most vulnerable individuals and families by providing cost-effective programs that have a profound impact on people's lives. And whereas the Hillsborough County Community Action Board's recommendations guide the development, implementation, and evaluation of community service block grant funds and programs that serve residents and communities in need. And whereas, with the support of the Community Action Board, Hillsborough County promotes economic security by providing opportunities for residents in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2019 as Community Action Month, and Hillsborough County urges all residents to recognize Hillsborough County Community Action Board's efforts to improve quality of life and enhance economic, enhance economic opportunities for regions' most vulnerable citizens. Executed this first day of May 2019, and signed by the seven members of the Board of County Commissioners. Who am I presenting this to? Henderson. Henderson. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank Commissioners for hosting and the proclamation, and that we are here, and we love the Hillsborough County, and we love to involve with the community and give back to the community as well. Thank you.
Father, father from the DIOC of St. Peterburg. Go.
Congratulations. To be very.
If you all want to take a picture. Here, somebody's got a whole mess. Okay. You can all push it out. Sorry, you don't stand there.
I guess.
Turn sideways so you don't fit in.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, good to see you. I'll present the next proclamation. I'm going to ask the members of the Hillsborough County Community Action Board that are here, better known as CAB, that'll come forward, and staff members, Ms. Audrey Ziegler, and any other staff members you have with you, please come forward. Good morning, how are you doing? Good morning, how are you? Morning, how are you doing? Morning. Where's Audrey? Oh, okay. Good morning. Good morning, Audrey. The month of May is designated as Community Action Month to celebrate local community action agencies for the work they do in the fight to assist low-income families to achieve economic self-sufficiency. Hillsborough County Community Action Board, better known as CAB, members demonstrate their dedication year-round to volunteer work in their individual communities throughout Hillsborough County. The Community Action Board's mission statement is Hillsborough County Community Action Board partners with community stakeholders to stabilize and empower vulnerable individuals and families to achieve self-sufficiency through advocacy and essential services. CAB members work with social service staff to assist eligible low-income individuals and families to cover tuition costs for industry certification programs such as firefighters, EMTs, award multiple post-secondary scholarships to youth between the ages of 17 and 22, provide summer educational enrichment opportunities to youth between the ages of 12 and 17, assist and motivate individuals and families in the family empowerment program, achieve financial independence by providing case management along with financial assistance to support and customize case plan, support advisory councils with annual projects, as well as numerous other activities of addressing poverty in Hillsborough County. And again, they do this on their own voluntary time, and appointed by the Board and others, so it's an honor for me to present this proclamation to the Community Action Agency in their recognition and reach. Whereas, Community Action Agencies have been fighting poverty since 1964, when they were created as a part of the United States Economic Opportunity Act. And whereas Community Action Agencies put a human face on poverty, it helps residents with lower income become self-sufficient, uplift neighborhoods, and ensure all people are able to live with dignity. And whereas the agencies are working with the state of Florida to guide reform of the welfare system, a partnership which enhances both entities and benefits Hillsborough County residents. And whereas Community Action Agencies contribute to Hillsborough County's most vulnerable individuals and families by providing cost-effective programs that have a profound impact on people's lives. And whereas the Hillsborough County Community Action Board's recommendations guide the development, implementation, and evaluation of community service block grant funds and programs that serve residents and communities in need. And whereas, with the support of the Community Action Board, Hillsborough County promotes economic security by providing opportunities for residents in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2019 as Community Action Month, and Hillsborough County urges all residents to recognize Hillsborough County Community Action Board's efforts to improve quality of life and enhance economic, enhance economic opportunities for regions' most vulnerable citizens. Executed this first day of May 2019, and signed by the seven members of the Board of County Commissioners. Who am I presenting this to? Henderson. Henderson. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Joey Henderson. I am the Vice Chair of the Community Action Board and work for Florida Home Partnership, and on behalf of our chairwoman, Ms. Noreen Copeland Miller, we really appreciate the Board of County Commissioners recognizing the Community Action Board. The Community Action Board is made up of, is a triumphant group that's made up of the Board of Community County Commissioners, representatives of the County Commissioners, the private industry, as well as from the low-income sectors. And these individuals come from all over Hillsborough County. Today with us, we have my colleagues, Ms. Jennifer Hutt Anderson from Plant City area, Ms. Kim Brilley Mitchell representing the Honorable Stacy White, and Ms. Regina Gambrell representing Head Start. And we work symbiotically with a dynamic group here at the Social Services Department that's led by the awesome leader by Ms. Audrey Ziegler, Maria Gillis, and Derek Guida, and also Ms. Sharon Gordon. And they have a great team of individuals that we work symbiotically with to really try to help those individuals who need the help most. And I'd like to quote briefly Robert Engelsoll, a quick quote that says, "We rise by lifting others." And I assure you, Hillsborough County is the leader when it comes to helping those who need the most help. And I really, once again, want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for this honor.
Henderson.
From social services staff, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Merrell, for your continued support of community action initiatives. We're also very appreciative and fortunate that we have a dedicated and passionate community action board that provides us leadership as to social services as well as the community. Thank you very much.
Good to see you. We'll get together again soon, okay? All right. Thanks for all the work you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merrell, change this to the agenda.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, we have two items that are being deferred. That is Item A 31, which was to approve an agreement between the County and Waste Connections of Florida to adjust the contractor's recycling processing fee. That's being deferred to a date to be determined. B 3, which was to authorize the issuance of not to exceed $100 million in bonds for various projects, is being deferred to May 15. We have one correction or revision. B 5, which was to award an agreement with Prince Contracting to extend Citrus Park Drive and connect Countryway Boulevard to Sheldon Road. That is a minor change to include apparently a CIP number that was not included in the first version. No items have been removed from consent for any reason. We have a handful of time certens. One public hearing. D 1, which is the second of two required public hearings for school concurrency agreement. Just to let you know, the applicant improperly advertised the notice, and so we'll ask you to open the public hearing and continue it to the next meeting so they can correct that notice error.
Which one was that, Mr. Merrell?
D 1, public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll just open and continue it, take public comment, but continue it. 10:15 is Item F 3, which is Commissioner Murman's item directing staff to coordinate with the Behavioral Health Task Force and Healthcare Advisory Board to review the benefits of the potential use of a needle exchange program in Hillsborough County. 10:30 is Item F 4, Commissioner White's item, directing us to work with surrounding landowners and assess the possibility of connecting Baum Boyett Scrub Preserve to Alify River State Park with an unpaved trail. 11:01, B 2, is a presentation from Fiscal Choice Consulting, communicating the results of the Planning Commission Development Services Cost of Service Fee Study. 11:15, two items, B 7, B 8. Both are audit reports from the County Internal Auditor, Aging Services In-Home Food Services Program, and Use of Overtime Pay. Recession for lunch, 11:45, and return at 1:30 for a board workshop on the Stormwater Program. Those are the changes.
Before we have a motion to that, Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you received a handout from one of my legislative aides just a bit ago from my Item F 4. I just want to state for the record that this is the exact material that's in the agenda backup. We just thought it would be helpful to have a larger-sized paper copy in front of you as I'm discussing my item.
Okay, now we need a motion to change this agenda. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White and Commissioner Kemp, seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
Who's phone? It's $25. Now moving to public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff, but rather than directly at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At this, at the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Board room. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes allowed for each speaker. Our first speaker is Shane Richardson.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here on behalf of Swamp Mountain Bike Club. I am the President of that organization, and we do a lot of volunteer work for the county in, at Baum Boyett Scrub Preserve, and also Flatwoods Wilderness Park. And we have an idea that we've brought to Commissioner White, but, you know, we want to bring the rest of it to the community and to the rest of the Commission, and we hopefully will be able to work with you all to be able to make this happen for the community. And I concede the rest of my time to, I believe, the next speaker in line, which is our Vice President.
Stop the clock. So you're yielding, stop the clock, please, stop the clock. So you're yielding your time to the next speaker, the rest of your time, remaining of your time? Okay, that's Mike Lamarka. Mike, so you have five minutes and 13 seconds.
Good morning, my name is Michael Lamarka. Thank you for having us here. We've had this idea to connect these two great parks in Hillsborough County, and everything in the middle is Hillsborough County-owned land, and, like I said, hopefully that we can have your blessing to connect these two great parks. We're only here to answer any questions if you have any questions on Item F 4. Also, we have the park manager of Alify River State Park, it's Brian Maxwell here. He's here if you have any other questions also. And that's all.
Okay.
I don't need the extra couple minutes. Thank you.
Next, Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, and I just want to remind you that I have you queued up for a 10:30 time certain, so if you're able to hang around, we'll be able to address the item while you're here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dottie Skipper, followed by Ellen Snelling.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? My name is Dottie Gruber Skipper, and most of you know me as an anti-human trafficking advocate, but in addition to anti-trafficking efforts, as a Board Member of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, and Governor Ron DeSantis's appointee to the statewide drug policy advisory council, today I stand before you to relay critical information regarding Agenda Item F 3, which I believe is Commissioner Murman's item. According to the Centers for Disease Control, there is no persuasive evidence that syringe exchange programs increase initiation, duration, or frequency of drug injection in communities who have implemented such programming. In fact, many of the recent increases in risk injection practices have been in communities that have not had syringe exchange programs. So in my opinion, and in the opinion of experts in the field, if a syringe exchange program So thank you Commissioners, and thank you Commissioner Merman for your ongoing championing of critical community issues.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Snelling, followed by Teresa Miller.
Morning Commissioners. I'm also going to be speaking on item F 3, and I first want to start off by congratulating Commissioner Sandra Merman because she received the Anti-Drug Alliance Mark Studstill Award of Excellence earlier this year for all of her hard work on the opioid crisis and fighting back against Big Pharma. So thank you very much for all the work you've done. I, as a mother of a daughter in recovery, and she started out with marijuana when she was in high school, but she did go forward and get on to harder drugs, including cocaine and opioids. So I come to you as a parent of a daughter in recovery, and also I unfortunately, two years ago, lost my brother. He lived in Miami-Dade County, and he died of a car fentanyl overdose. So I've had a lot of effects of the opioid crisis on my own family, so I do have some concerns about a syringe-exchange program, but I echo everything Dottie just said that pretty much sums up. My concern is mainly that if we do go forward with this, and the main reason for syringe-exchange programs is to reduce certain types of infectious disease, but since, you know, we're also talking about opioids, it wouldn't prevent opioid use, but it could be an opportunity to get a hard-to-reach population into treatment. So if the data shows that we do need such a program here, then I highly recommend that we do work, and not just give people a card that says, here's some treatment agencies, but really work hard and follow up and have a linkage to treatment for these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teresa Miller, followed by Jennifer Mott-Singer.
Hello, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. For those of you who are new and haven't met me before, 12 years ago, my son developed a severe addiction to opiates, and after that, I went to USF and got a master's in mental health and have been volunteering in the community to save lives since then. And to me, before I got into the drug field, harm reduction was more like the program that we saw here where you teach the children to swim to prevent them from dying, but apparently in the drug world, it is attempting to make drug abuse and use safer. And some things personally I think you need to think about is, if you have this program, are you really helping them, especially if you don't have the mandatory items, counseling and treatment that Dottie spoke of? Or are you enabling them? Are you enabling them to continue to lead an unsafe, unhealthy, often fatal, and illegal lifestyle? And that's really a big concern. And who is going to be attracted here to our community with a program like that? If you're shooting heroin, you're really, you can't hold a job. And then you have homeless people, more homeless people, you'll have more possibly drug dealers and doctors that want to prey on these people. And where are we going to locate those locations? You know, more than likely, they need to be where the people who have the addictions are, which often is already a struggling area in our community. And lastly, I just want to say that, in my opinion, what you're doing is you're taking away the fear factor, and what I call that is the fear of having an infection, the fear of getting Hep C, the fear of getting HIV problems, and the fear of going often to jail. Those things sometimes will keep someone who's using drugs from going into the injection world. And I don't know, I really have concerns about having this program here in our county. So unless we can really make some things mandatory, but as many of you know, with substance abuse and addiction in our families, their thinking's already impaired, so they're often not thinking of what's the safe and best thing for me. So I'm here to support and help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mott-Singer, followed by Abby Feely.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Jennifer Mott-Singer, and I represent the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I did send you a memo yesterday, so I won't reiterate the points that I made in that about the fee study, but I've been around this topic for 15 years, so I just want to highlight one point that I may have missed, which is the level of service point. That is specific to the fees. Fees increase not necessarily at the same time, or necessarily taken into consideration when you're reviewing the department's budgets. Any user-fee-based department should be reviewed for level of service improvements, technology improvements, compensation increases, as long as the fees that the customers are paying are there, that should be taken into consideration, but all too often, it's not. So I'm just telling you this morning to, as you look ahead at your budget discussions for the next year, as these fees do increase, please take into consideration that the customer is looking for an improved level of service, and that could mean an array of things like salary increases or technology improvements, things of that nature. So thank you.
Thank you. Abby Feely, followed by Joanne O'Brien.
Good morning Commissioners, Abby Feely, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. I too wanted to speak to you on item B 2 this morning, which is a presentation that's coming before you in relation to the fee study. Many of us had the opportunity to attend meetings that were held last week, both for industry and for citizens, for the presentation of the fees. I think what you're going to see today are, there are some substantial increases in these fees. We had some preliminary background information. I think we'd like to try to get more of that information, especially comparisons from the other municipalities that were studied. I think the one thing we'd really like to ask for today is the opportunity to workshop this item with you, once you've had an opportunity to see the fees, and then to have some discussion as to how this may impact everyone from mom-and-pop operations up to larger developers. A lot of times, larger developers don't have a problem absorbing that fee, but many people who are trying to do smaller developments or make modifications to their own businesses could actually be severely impacted by these fees and the opportunity to make improvements to their property and overall to the county. So I thank you for the opportunity this morning and look forward to the opportunity to work with you in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker for the morning is Joanne O'Brien.
Good morning, Joanne O'Brien. Here today, I want to speak about Feeding America, and I don't know if you all are aware that they do have another program called the Wind Dixie Charity Market, which is every Monday from 1:00 to 3:00, and then 4:00 to 7:00. So if you know anybody in need, they have to call down there and make an appointment now, because it was sheer chaos there for the last couple of weeks, and this new thing seems to be working out. The numbers, 813-252-1190, and make an appointment, it's every Monday. And they are doing wonderful work. And I came upon this, I've been doing this for about nine years, bringing food to people that are shut in, and you never know, we all could be one paycheck away from being hungry. No one should be hungry. And the other thing with the children, from Friday to Monday, they might not be even eating anything. So I always, every year for my birthday, do a GoFundMe page for Feeding America, and a gentleman that I believe you all may know, came to my house and said he didn't want to be recognized on my GoFundMe page, opened up his wallet and gave me $100, so I whisked it down to Feeding America yesterday. And this is what I enjoy doing, trying to help the people, trying to get through my own problem that's neither here nor there right now. But we need to take care of our children in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Appreciate all that you do, thank you very much. That's our last speaker for the morning. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve the consent agenda, seeing to further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Yes Commissioners, your 10:00 AM time certain, which is a public hearing D 1, and again, we're going to open it, take public comment, and then continue to the next meeting so that the proper notice can be filed by the applicant.
Okay. Who's presenting this? Good morning, Ms. Graham.
Good morning Commissioners, Adam Cormley, Development Services. Item D 1 is a public hearing to consider a prop share agreement with Lennar Homes, Hillsborough County, and School Board of Hillsborough County for the Belmont Town Homes Parcel C subdivision. As Mr. Merrill indicated, there is a notice, a problem with this hearing today, so asked the Board to open, take public comment, and continue the item to close that to May 15th at 10:00 AM. Available for any questions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D 1? Anyone wishing to address item D 1? I have a motion for continuance.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to continue this item. Commissioner, okay. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
10:15 time certain, F 3, Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to start off by saying, I want to thank the, I call my friends out there, Ellen and Dottie and everybody, thank you so much for your comments today. I'm on the fence on this issue, I'm just going to start off by saying that. I am not a total believer that this is the best program, but given the fact that we are still leading the state in overdose deaths in Hillsborough County, we've had a 24% increase the last five years. We had over 270 opioid overdose deaths last year alone, plus 579 substance-exposed babies were born. We lead the state. We did a great opioid action plan, it's got the education, prevention, everything in it. And, you know, when I read about the House bill, that's how this came to pass, there was a House bill, and I know Speaker Oliva was always been against this program, but he went and visited, you know, the actual program, the pilot project that was authorized. In 2016, the legislature authorized the University of Miami to operate a needle and syringe-exchange pilot program in Miami-Dade County. I plan on going down there to look at it, because I think it's worthwhile for information and research. But the pilot program offers free, clean, unused needles and syringes to intravenous drug users as a means to prevent the transmission of bloodborne diseases, HIV, AIDS, viral hepatitis. So the bill this year extends this program statewide, and I'm going to give you some statistics, some results of what they have coming out of that program. And the bill actually authorizes county commissions to establish sterile needle-syringe exchange programs by adopting county ordinances that meet certain program requirements, that is working with the local health department, et cetera. Now, the House bill has passed unanimously, the Senate bill has passed unanimously, the bills, of course, have to come together, it is, the final bill's waiting in Senate messages, and I assume it's going to pass. But, and it has certain reporting requirements attached to it, but basically, the needle and syringe exchange programs help to increase the number of drug users who enter treatment for substance abuse disorder. This would be my input into any kind of plan moving forward if we were to do this, and today is just a study. We're not voting to implement anything today. I think we need to research it and study. It reduces needle-stick injuries among first responders, providing proper disposal. It reduces substance abuse overdose deaths, provides education on overdose prevention, safer injection practices, provides referral to medical, mental health, social services, and of course, all of this that's mentioned here, what this program would do, we built into our opioid action plan. So it's already there, ready to go. And it does provide other tools to prevent HIV, hepatitis C, sexually transmitted infections. So I talked a little about the program. As of December 31st, 2018, the program enrolled 1,002 participants. They made eight, almost 9,000 exchanges, they provided almost 250,000 unused syringes in exchange for 260,000 used syringes. But more importantly, they achieved the following results. They referred 66 individuals for substance abuse disorder treatment. They administered 913 HIV tests, which resulted in 64 positive diagnoses. They administered 708 hepatitis C tests, which resulted in 298 positive diagnoses. So they're really preventing and diagnosing major, you know, illnesses that are out there. They distributed 1,900 naloxone kits to participants, that's Narcan, and family members, with 1,075 overdose reversals being reported, which is significant. The pilot program is expressly prohibited from using any state, county, or municipal funds for its operation, and must use grant donations from private sources to fund the program. The bill is under consideration. The Speaker did come on board after he visited. The Senate has generally always been supportive of this project, but I think they have a high opioid crisis in their county too, in Miami-Dade. And I do think this is worth having this studied by the Behavioral Health Task Force that has been around for the last five, I think, six years, that did the parity in our Hillsborough County healthcare plan, plus they also did the opioid action plan, and the Healthcare Advisory Board, and just have them study it, come back to us with their results and recommendations. If there might be an implementation in that recommendation, that would be worthy of our consideration. Obviously, that would be important for us to look at going forward. Just a couple more things. On the Behavioral Health Task Force, and I do have a list of committee members, if any of you would want to see that somewhere here in my file, that include the Florida Mental Health Institute, that's the FMHI at USF. It includes the College of Public Health, includes all the major substance abuse behavioral health providers in our community, it's about 52 people. It's chaired by Brad Herrmanns from Suncoast Community Health Centers. So I think we have to be careful, very careful. I'll be honest with you, I think, but I do think it's worth us studying, if this is another tool in the toolkit that we need to use to combat this high number of opioid deaths in our county, I do think that we should move in that direction. So I'd like to direct our healthcare services staff, led by Gene Early, in coordination with the Behavioral Health Task Force and the Healthcare Advisory Board, to review, to study the benefits of potential use of a needle exchange program in Hillsborough County, and bring a report back to the Board of County Commission as part of the Phase Two of the Behavioral Health Task Force opioid plan of action and milestones that we did identify. This is one of our things in Phase Two, and I will say, I think in Miami, they are saving lives, and that's worthy of consideration.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp, Smith, and Overman. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you.
I've put a lot of thought into this item. As a healthcare professional, specifically a pharmacist, I feel like I bring an important voice to the board on this matter. So, I'm going to take my political hat off and put my healthcare professional hat on, and just say that if we're going to do this, it needs to be evidence-based. And in my mind, there are three questions. I'm going to call them Question One, Question 2A, and Question 2B, okay? Question One is, you know, do these programs reduce the spread of bloodborne illness? I think the answer is yes. There's a robust body of data that supports that these programs decrease the spread of bloodborne illness. Question 2A would be, what do these programs mean for drug abuse rates at the individual level? Question 2B would be, what do these programs mean for drug abuse rates at the community level? Again, I've been agonizing over this one because of my background, putting a lot of thought into it. I've pulled some studies, some literature myself, and taken a look at them. I've also reached out to a couple of experts that I have contact with at the University of Florida. And I'd like to just read a sampling of a response from one of those experts. And she says, "I'm not coming across any robust literature on the impact of needle exchange programs on individual drug use or the potential community impact. There are postulated community benefits, such as decreased disposal of contaminated paraphernalia, although this has not been well-established through strong clinical evidence. It does seem that most interventions are not singular in nature. There is a needle exchange program coupled with methadone clinic referral or other forms of social work as examples." So, I'm going to support the item. You know, all we're asking for today is just a report to use as a starting point. But I just want to say to staff that if the committee recommends a needle exchange program, that number one, that it not be singular in nature, and that it be incorporated into a scholarly study, preferably for publication in a peer-reviewed journal. And the purpose of that study, in my mind, would be to answer questions 2A and 2B. Hillsborough County could be on the cutting edge of having, of providing some data on those two issues. So, Mr. Merrill, I know we have relationships with USF. I know we can make that happen. So, you know, if you would float that idea, I'd be very appreciative.
Is that amendment to the motion?
I don't think it needs to be an amendment to the motion. I mean, it's...
Well, we already have the professionals on the committee from USF, so I assume it's going to be covered. But we will definitely take that into consideration.
But there was more that he expounded upon besides professionals on the committee. You asked for a report, a study report, didn't you?
What I've just said is that if they do recommend a needle exchange program to this board, that number one, it not be singular in nature, and that it be incorporated into a scholarly study, preferably for publication in a peer-reviewed journal.
See, that part is not in the motion.
Yeah, you'd have to make an amendment.
I'll state that as an amendment to the main motion.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment?
Well, I'll second, yeah. I'd second it for discussion, I guess.
Okay, we have a second amendment by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you for bringing this forward, and I recognize the value of looking for solutions for those that are addicted to opioids. I do want to, it's somewhat in line with Commissioner White's comments, want to include in the study a method for measuring outcomes. We are wonderful about finding terrific folks that do amazing work at solving our serious social issues. But without a framework of feedback designed in the process, I think we oftentimes can find ourselves somewhat not sure what we're doing, or how well we're being successful, or how we're spending the resources. So, I'm really excited to see this come forward because it's such a critical issue in our community. And I'd like to, sort of in line, whether it's a scholarly study or whatever, but like to know that whatever the process is, is that it includes a means of tackling a way of measuring outcomes as part of the work that needs to be done. And that's oftentimes difficult to do when it's grant-funded and multiple organizations providing the services. So, just, I like this idea, but I'd like to make sure that when staff is looking for this, that we build a feedback system that helps us measure success. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to appreciate Commissioner Merman for bringing this forward. I read that article in The Times some weeks ago that delineated what was happening, and also for the update on kind of what the legislature has done with it. So, it sounds like it's moving forward to allow a local community, a county, to have a needle exchange program. As I understand, it was only a pilot in Miami and the only one that existed in the state of Florida. But I think there are examples, if I'm not mistaken, from other places also. Also, Commissioner White, I know that you have expertise and a lot of expertise or experience to add to this conversation, so I appreciate your comments. I worry a little bit with regards, Commissioner White, to your idea of a peer-reviewed study, knowing that it could be something that could be years down the line, you know, to include that as a requirement, I think might be, if there are some others, I'd certainly like that knowledge to be part of being incorporated, to be reviewed. But to, I couldn't support requiring that to be part of it because I'd be concerned about that, you know, we could be years and years off of ever getting the kind of information that we would need. In terms of just in general, I, when I read about the, and the Miami use here, and Commissioner Merman, you also pointed out some of the, really, the life-saving that this measure did in Miami or could do here. I also, knowing and having some familiarity with, from my time at Tampa Crossroads, and like many others have families or others that have made us aware of some of the issues involved in this, that I would not want whatever program we instituted to, if it was successful in Miami in saving lives, I wouldn't want to include any disincentives or requirements in it that would then make the program not as available or useful or life-saving as it has been. So, I would also like to understand what they're doing in Miami and other places. And I, for, as my time at Tampa Crossroads, one of our biggest issues, I was on the board there for many years, and they do a lot of drug-related rehabilitation. But one of the biggest problems was that people who were ready to go for help did not have any program that they could enter, or any resources that were available to them. Sometimes people were begging for help, and they were told that because they couldn't afford it, they couldn't get it, or because it would have to wait months, or that maybe they should be arrested first because they could then perhaps get referred to a program to help them. So, I think that's a really complex issue. I wouldn't want any, anything that we, and I'm just saying this generally, not for an amendment or anything, but I wouldn't want anything included in this that might not make it as impactful or effective as possible. And maybe, and maybe after looking at it, they would find that the way to go would be to inform people of opportunities when they're ready and available. So, I'm just, those are just my general comments about this. I am concerned about a peer-reviewed study and the length of time and what it could do to impede going forward.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. The statistics you read are very compelling, and, you know, I think there's very few people who don't have some connection, some family or friends touched by this epidemic. So, in being at the, leading the state is just, is very compelling that we need to act and find, study, and explore some ways of addressing this. We also have a large and growing hepatitis problem, and a problem with the other diseases that this kind of needle exchange program can address. I also think the speakers today highlighted the importance of what Commissioner White was talking about, the importance of using this kind of program as a way of referring and bringing people suffering from addiction into other programs where they can get help in addition to the needle exchange, making sure that this is some avenue for getting them help in other programs. So, I really like that part of the suggestion that you made as we study this and look forward, move forward with how best to implement this. I think that's a key component, is making sure that this program is tied to those other steps. And finally, I, and I know you're next in the queue, so I think you will address the idea. I didn't take you to be meaning in your amendment, Commissioner White, that incorporating this needle exchange program, whatever comes out of this study, into a peer-reviewed study. I didn't take that to mean we would wait until the results of the study. I took you to mean this program could be providing data, working in conjunction with the university to do a study as our program possibly got ongoing, possibly in a pilot program phase or something. We, I mean, it's all, it's all pretty big at this stage, but I understood you to be suggesting we would move forward and the study that would come with it would not be holding up the program. So, I'll just ask you to address that, and thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize.
Well, Commissioner Smith, you are absolutely right. You can't have a needle exchange program study without a needle exchange program. So, Commissioner Kemp, if it gives you peace of mind, I'm not suggesting that, you know, we're asking that somehow the study's done or data's collected, you know, ahead of time or that things are held up. If they recommend that we do one, I'm suggesting that we move forward, but that researchers are collecting data along the way so that Hillsborough County has a chance to be on the cutting edge of seeking to answer those questions that are not answered in scientific literature, at least based upon my review and in talking to some academic experts. And yes, to your point, that can take years sometimes, a study of that nature. But the researchers can be going through that process, collecting the data, doing the statistical analysis, and, you know, they could either keep the board updated, or, you know, we could, you know, wait until we crack open some public health journal and, you know, see Hillsborough County's model as a study model, so.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I did note, Gene Early, do you want to make a couple of comments? Just about the evidence base, because that's a really important, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Overman.
You know, I think that it's very important that we do the outcomes and that we do, use USF as a good group because they're on there. And usually what we'll do is ask them to do a literature search before they start it. And then, following that, then they'll start to evaluate the program and programs around. And then I think the other piece of it is, you know, when you get ready, if you're going to implement it, you would go ahead and have USF, like many of our pilot programs, where they actually do the complete evaluation of the program in ongoing. And then they'll also have outcomes that they're going to measure against. So, it'll be very, and Mike Merrill is very, very important for outcomes, and I think that he's all about accountability, so I think it's a good thing. This was never intended, as far as I know, to be the end-all. It's basically a starting point, and primarily because we've been watching the House and Senate consider that bill, and basically the task force looked at it as part of the plan of action and milestones, and basically said they wanted to review it and see if that's one of the possible toolkits they wanted to use. So, that's really all I had to say.
Thank you, Gene. And just...
One more thing. You can't assure that we're going to get a publication because we did a study, but it certainly is a national leading edge, and Commissioner White is exactly right.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I want to thank all of you for your comments. I really appreciate it, and this is a work in progress type item that I think you got to start somewhere, and I think it's important to the health and safety of our community. I really do. And I do think it will give us an opportunity to get more patients into our healthcare plan, where they can get substance abuse and mental health counseling, and help with our, increasing our social determinants. Actually, it might increase affordable housing, could help when that. Potential of addressing the opioid crisis with Narcan, that's a critical part of this, and the HIV issues and hepatitis C issues that we have here in this county. So, I think there's a lot of, in addition to helping veterans. So, I do, I want to thank you all very much for your consideration, and I think it's just something that we need to look at and move forward with.
Commissioner White, you recognize.
And to Mr. Early's point, I just want to remind the board that in my motion to amend on the peer-reviewed journal part, I did use the word preferably. Preferably for publication in a peer-reviewed journal. Good point.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith and Merman. We're voting on the amendment. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
We're now back on the amended motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp, Smith, and Overman. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Hagan voted no.
Before we move into, Mr. Merrill, let me remind you members, if you want to break for lunch, if you want to break for lunch, understand we got to complete this morning's agenda, then break and come back for our workshop. If you do not want to break for lunch, we'll keep on rolling and roll into our workshop at 1:30. Just want to make, be mindful of that, okay? Mr. Merrill.
10:30 time certain, F4, Commissioner White's item.
Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the members of the Swamp Mountain Bike Club for being here this morning. I was approached by them about connecting the Bomboyette Scrub Preserve ELAP site with the Alify River State Park. The Bomboyette Scrub Preserve, as many of you know, is incredibly popular with mountain bikers, and the Alify River State Park is growing in popularity for that use as well. So, I've had a meeting with representatives of the Swamp Mountain Bike Club and members of county staff to take a preliminary look at proposals for connecting the sites. County staff is supportive of the idea and believes that they can successfully create the connection. It's important to note that the Swamp Mountain Bike bikers' reputation precedes them when it comes to assuming the responsibility for capital improvements on trails and bicycling sites. It's important to note that the proposal is for an unpaved trail, so the only possible capital improvements necessary might be the clearing of brush and small trees, which I fully anticipate would be borne by the Swamp Mountain Bike Club, given their reputation. It's also important to note that all of the lands in the proposed connections are public or quasi-public. or quasi-public, so I'm not proposing that the county buy any land and I'm certainly not proposing that the county exercise any eminent domain powers. So I have Megan Nixon, my legislative aide here. She's just going to put the handout that was presented to you earlier on the Elmo. Again, that was and is in your backup material ahead of time. We just simply wanted to put it on the Elmo and, and provide you with a larger copy of So as you can see, there are three proposed options here, an option one, an option two, and an option three. It's my understanding that both the Swamp Mountain Bike Club and county staff prefer option number one. And you'll notice when I make my motion that I'll be referencing surrounding land owners, plural, and that's simply because although all of the land along the route is public or quasi-public, I believe that trail would traverse not only county lands, but also lands owned by Tampa Bay Water and perhaps some TECO easements. I anticipate that there will be no cost to the county to provide for this trail, other than the staff time necessary to prepare an agreement. Because there's no need for land acquisition and because the Swamp Mountain Bike Club's proven track record in providing for capital improvements, I will move to direct staff to work with surrounding landowners and assess the possibilities of connecting the Bombay et Scrub Preserve to the Alify River State Park with an unpaved trail.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp and Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, and thank you for working with Swamp Commissioner White. I'm very excited about this, this project and, and I know that the county staff is supportive as well. I've talked to them about this and talked to some of the Swamp members. And I just want to say, I, I've worked out at Bombay et area with Sierra Club when they had adopted the road. I've done a lot of hiking out there. I'm not a, a mountain biker myself, but I, I, every time I'm out there, I see how popular that trail is for people and it's, it's just another way we can open up our ELAP lands and our parks for the enjoyment of passive recreation. And, and I know that the Swamp Club is, it's like, it's like the Florida Trail Association in, in, in that it's a volunteers working themselves and really providing a lot of labor for the, for the county. They are a 25-year-old organization, going strong, willing to, to continue volunteering and, and provide maintenance. They, they maintain 120 miles of trails currently, so adding another four miles would be nothing for them. And I have full confidence that they could take this on and do a, a great job with the light maintenance that, that you described and, and I'm just real excited about it and happy to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Just want to say thank you to Commissioner White. This is an awesome idea and I think it's really exciting and any connectivity we can get between these places is a great thing. Also to Commissioner Smith's point, I know that this region or these, these parks are, people come from all over the country. It's a great attraction for the mountain biking and in the future, maybe we can consider some of those needs because I know I've been contacted about that in the past and what we could maybe do as improvements. I use that word with hesitation sometimes, but, but this is a great improvement. This would be a great thing, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp and Smith. Seeing any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Murrell?
If you want to waive the rules, we can take your 11:00 AM time cert and B2.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman and Kemp to waive the rules and pick up item B2. Seeing any further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to two. Seven to zero.
Nine members. I've been trying to get the members, there are nine members, okay? Like that. Good morning, Ms. Caskin.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, my name is Peggy Caskin, County Internal Auditor. Pursuant to the 2019 Annual Audit Plan, the County Internal Auditor's Office procured one and contractually managed two planning commission cost of services fees, fee studies. In addition, the Development Services Department procured and contractually managed two cost service, service studies of its own areas of operations. The County Internal Auditor's Office did not participate in the Development Services Studies. The two planning commission and the two development services cost studies were performed by Fiscal Choice Consulting. The results of the studies were consolidated into a single presentation for reporting purposes as they are related and fall under the same similar family of fee studies. Prior to today, the consultant provided management with detailed support documentation and cost methodologies. The consultant did not produce a formal report. The board will not be requested to accept a final communication, which is the normal practice when bringing audits to the public record. Fiscal Choice Consulting Partner Bruce Cowens performed the four studies. Mr. Cowens is a financial and management consultant with extensive experience in federal, state, local and special district environments and has personally directed user fee studies for over 1,000 state and local department, government departments. He also served as an advisor to municipal governments as small as a few thousand and up to the largest metro governments in the United States, including New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, Houston, Nashville, St. Louis, Kansas City, and then locally here at Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. Mr. Cowens is here today to present his results of his work.
Bruce. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. Thank you for having me. I have a question for you before we begin. We've got a 15-minute slot set for this. We put the slide deck together before we knew the time slot, so in terms of managing our time, if you would like to have discussion, Q and A, in a 15-minute slot, then I would compress the formal presentation and leave more time for Q and A. What is your pleasure?
I would suggest that you compress your, your presentation so we have time for questions asked.
Okay, great.
And can you give your name on the record, please, sir?
I am Bruce Cowens of Fiscal Choice Consulting. Okay. When we began this, we knew that fees were rather old. The development service fee prices have not been adjusted for 10 years. The planning commission fees have not been adjusted for 30 years. It was therefore not a great surprise that the cost of actually doing the work was higher than you have been charging. Work methods have evolved, so have codes, et cetera, just a lot of change. So the more that things change, the less the current fees cover their costs. On this slide, I would say if you remember one thing from this whole presentation, it's these three points. Number one, current fees don't recover costs. Number two, where we were able to find comparables, Hillsborough County is generally charging less than other governments. And number three, the underlying services are reasonably efficient. What's the difference between a tax and a fee? Well, there is a sense in which anytime you charge anybody for anything, that feels related, but there is a difference in a fee and a tax. To the extent you pay tax, it guarantees you no particular access to a specific amount of service, but when you pay a fee, you bought it. You get that service. If an activity is related essentially to the benefit of the person requesting it and not to the general public at large, those are the kinds of things that tend to become What we did was take your budgets and, and financial reports, activity reports, and drill down to the level of individual activities, talk to staff about how they did the work, who they worked with, how long it took, how many they did, et cetera, and developed a finding on each activity, what does it cost to do that and how does that cost compare to what you are currently charging. We include indirect costs as well. When you compare costs between jurisdictions, it's a real question of did they define costs the same way? Did they do a cost study? If they did a cost study, when did they do the cost study? So comparisons are important and, and we've done some in this context, but they're not all, they might be apples to pears. It's not necessarily apples to apples. So we looked at development services fees. We started with that and then the question came, would it be more useful for a policy purpose to take all of these fees up at one time? And therefore, we're looking at planning commission fees today as well. We found there are a number of activities that are performed that aren't currently charged. There are support from other offices involved in reviews that weren't factored into current prices, things, it's been a long time since the last fee study. So while what was done back then, everybody signed off on it back then, but 10 to 30 years later, things have changed. So here you see a slide that discusses the development services finding and the, the top line is key. You're getting approximately 4.3 million a year in revenue from these activities. It costs 6 million to do them, leaving you a million seven short, which is coming from taxes, a 72% cost recovery. We are recommending revenue of 5.3 million, so of the 1.7, we would say one. Factored into that was our sense that in some cases, the difference between price and cost would be great enough that it might be difficult for the public to accept price increases of a certain magnitude. During the planning commission hearing, it came up that they said, well, we get going to full cost, but could we take our time and phase that in? If you would phase that in, then I wouldn't necessarily limit that you should only ever get 5.3 million. My 5.3 million recommendation factors into what we've seen other units of government do and how much of an increase makes sense. Now, we have also heard that developers are interested, they said, okay, you know, we got it, we have to pay more, but can we get more for it? And the answer to that is entirely up to you. I, I express no opinion on it. I would just note that to the extent that you give them more than they're getting today and that costs money, our findings today don't capture that cost of doing more. So here you have a slide that summarizes development services and what you see on, you see the total line at the top and below that, the development services line. We have also factored in the costs of reviews performed by other offices on those same applications. You see that planning commission is getting $33,750. That's because they get a $150 fee for certain applications, costs them $228,000 to do Here are an example of some of the development services findings. Without reading them to you, I will point out that the red ink up there indicates the extent to which current prices under-recover the actual cost. Next to that, you'll see the peer average and this is, it's hard to get an exact match on all services, but there are, there are comparative findings. They factor it in how we develop our recommendations. Looking at the planning commission, it incurs costs to support its own applications to the tune of about 140,000, but they also spend about $228,000 in reviewing applications sent over by development services. Here's an example of how we get so out of whack. This is from a comp plan map amendment, private. Staff explained the process, took 77 and a half hours of planning commission staff and 33.3 hours of time from departments reporting to the county administrator. We also have allocated a small amount of cost for non-labor support, coming to a total of about $8,600 in cost, for which you're charging $1,000. Down at the bottom, this is a case where I am recommending you set the price at 5,000 because I believe going from 1,000 to 8,600 is a lot all at once. If you got there slower, I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to going to 8,600, but I felt that all at once, that was rather a lot. It has been pointed out to me that sometimes my recommendations are more aggressive than others. Yes, that's true. That's subjective. If you're looking for an exact rule of how to set a recommendation on a price, I'm sorry, I can't give you one. It's just my opinion and you won't hurt my feelings if you override my recommendations. On that point, there is one fee for a subdivision construction plan, transportation resubmital. And my recommendation in the file you have says $135. My bad, should have said 1,350. It costs 1357 to do it. I did not intend to recommend 135. I hit return before I typed the final zero. I apologize. So at this point, in the interest of leaving time for discussion, again, you can see there's red ink throughout this, but I'm going to just end with this. I wouldn't wait 10 years or 30 years to update this. I understand that with the 2009 study, that increasing fees in the middle of that would have put it in a period that was still recessionary and that may not have been good policy, but in general, that's a long time to go without increasing prices and it forces you into a position where when you actually do the study, you will find that you're spending more time on them than you have any, any chance of recovering. And then people don't want to raise prices that much. So I would say perhaps a little more often. The models are in staff's hands. We've showed them how to use it. I believe they're competent, we're available for tech support, but with that, I will cease the formal presentation and, and leave time for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have some members in the queue. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Thank you very much for your report and I appreciate you, your time to go through each of the items when we met prior to today, so it was very, very helpful. One of the things I really appreciate about financial planning is that we look at for what, where we want to be down the road and what we need to do to get there. What I'm seeing here is that we need to do it more frequently than every 10 years, clearly. So one of the things that I would like to suggest in, in however this comes out to play is that we review this, you know, more free, obviously more frequently, in, in two to three years, if not every year. Every year would be a lot, but I think it's critically important. What we heard from the audience earlier is that they are concerned that, you know, if we're going to raise fees, we want a higher level of service. Your report points out pretty starkly that the level of service that are, that's currently being charged, or the fees that we're collecting for the level of service that we're providing are well under what we're able to do without taking funds from other sources of government revenues to pay for the services that are needed. So clearly, there needs to be an adjustment. I'm not a real fan of ripping a Band-Aid off slowly. It's very painful. I'm also recognizes that economics ebb and flow all day long. Waiting until we're in another recessionary period to review our fees to recognize that we're still 20 to 30% below what it takes to offer the services is, is difficult to suggest that human behavior is going to be any different than it has been in the past. So I, I, while I do recognize there's some sensitivity to raising prices, it does appear as though making major changes from our overall long-term plan is an area where we might want to focus since that is a deviation from what our long-term plan. And right now, we're not charging very much for that. So that was the one observation I kind of went through is like, if we're going to make changes, making major changes to our long-term plan needs to be really well thought through since the cost of that is extensive. And thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I want to thank staff. I, I want to thank Mr. Cowens. I think this is a really thorough and provides a good basis for us moving forward with relations to these fees. I, before the, our two new commissioners were here, I pushed extensively on just this. And the, the reason that I made a motion several times, raised this at commission meetings, was because one, I wondered about the volume of applications that we were getting here and I wondered how it compared to other nearby or other counties in Florida in terms of what we were charging for application fees. And when I walked in my office one day after a land use meeting, I took only about an hour to look up what Pasco, Manatee, Broward and Miami-Dade were doing for the same land that, or the same process, application process for a comp plan change that we were doing. And we were, as I found out, we had fees of 1,000 and 3,000. One thing I discovered is in five years, we'd only charged the $1,000 fee. We'd never charged even a $3,000 fee. The other thing I found out that day, or not that day, I found these things out that day, I found that out later, was that the same fee that we had charged $1,000 for, for a very big comp plan change here in Hillsborough County, they had been charging- a very big comp plan change here in Hillsborough County, they had been charging more, like 17,000 or 18,000 for in Pasco County, just 10 miles to the north. The same thing, result was true 10 miles to the south in Manatee County. In Broward County, they were charging more, like 22,000 for the same thing, and to my shock, in Miami Dade, it was 230,000. Maybe they just don't have comp plan changes at large, but that was, that was accurate. And I, and then I looked further, and I found out that since we instituted these fees in 1987, under Jan Platt, when the Berlin Wall was here with us and Ronald Reagan was president, they had never been changed since 1987. So for 30 years, our taxpayers have been subsidizing this process, and that's not good. And we've also not been even anywhere near what they've been charging for similar things in surrounding counties and obviously aren't charging to pay the cost of the work that we're doing here. Again, you pointed out the effectiveness of what we're doing, the reasonable efficiency of what we're doing, our level of service at this time. So if we were going to change it, I would, I would think that, again, we would have to look at higher fees to do more. It's been a gift of sorts for the last 30 years that we were so staggeringly low. I'd like to make a motion to institute these fees at that 90% level, and to do so, also to review at a minimum these fees every, on a five-year cycle, every five years, so that we can look and make sure that we don't let it go 30 years again, and that we are charging reasonable fees for practices that we, that we do.
Well, the motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you very much for this very thorough audit and, and to making it very clear in your presentations that the taxpayers have been subsidizing these services of the, our planning commission and development services for 10 years. And, you know, it's just really important that everybody pays their fair share in our community and that the taxpayers aren't asked to subsidize any one industry, the costs of any one industry over another. I am with Commissioner Overman on ripping the Band-Aid off and, and getting up to as close a level as we can, as quickly as we can, where the, the user fees cover the bulk of the services and 90%. The only thing is, I would really like to see, see this reviewed three, every three years. I mean, it's, it's clear that if we set these user fees at 90% of the cost now, next year, it'll be 80-something percent, and the year after that, it could be 70-something percent, and by the time we get to five years, we could be paying much less of the cost. So I think it would be easier on the industry and easier on the taxpayer, certainly if our reviews were even every three years, so we don't ever fall into this lag time again where it's just so tough to, to get everybody back up to speed. As far as asking for extra work at the same time we ask for the fees to be made more equitable, you know, I think that just ends up digging us further into the hole, too. As was pointed out here, these, the, your audit addressed the, the current level of service. So, so at the current staffing, at the current timing of, of providing services, we are this far behind and, and we need to do this much to catch up to that. If we were going to then try to increase services, say decreasing the, the permit time, we'll need extra staff. If we're going to, you know, raise salary levels, as was suggested, which, and add extra technology, all of that adds cost. So it's my understanding this audit just catches us up to the, it shows the way to catching us up to the current level of services. So as we, I'm not against increasing services if that's what the customer wants to pay for, but then we would need to adjust the fees accordingly for the sake of the taxpayer. And so I think that's, that's where I'll leave it for now. I'm very, very appreciative of your, your thorough report, and Commissioner Kemp, I'm very appreciative of your extra research and providing the facts and figures that you had looked into for the exorbitant, the huge differences between what we're charging and surrounding counties. So that should give everyone comfort that we don't, you know, we don't have to worry about competition, not to mention the fact that we're a very attractive market for development, for housing, for commercial. We don't have to be the cheapest, certainly, but, you know, as you pointed out, we have been for a long, long time, and there's, there's just no reason for that. So, thank you.
Before I move on to Commissioner Merrill, Mr. Merrill, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, just quickly, I want to respond to this issue of, of service. I was shocked to see Ms. Motzinger's memo. We've been meeting with the industry for months and months and months. It's the first time we've ever heard they have a problem with services. Matter of fact, it's been the opposite. They've been telling us all along for months, "Service is great. We've got the statistics to show that we're on top of it." We're, we're giving them everything they're asking for. I don't think there's a need to add more salaries, more services. We're doing it. We're going to be bringing in technology. We've talked about that. We can look at fees at that time. I don't think that's a reason to, to not raise fees at this, at this point.
Thanks, Mr. Merrill. Commissioner Merrill, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few questions, and thank you, Ms. Merrill. You answered one of my questions, and, but I do want to follow up some additional. Could we maybe improve the timeframe that they're asking for? I mean, is that something that's even a possibility? I don't know. I guess maybe I'd have to hear from Adam Gormley if, because they're saying, like, for, to submit an application, receive the first round of comments, they would like to see 20 business days. Today, it takes 45 days. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just going...
Right. So that's why I had to respond.
Okay.
I asked Adam. We pulled the statistics. 95% of the time, we're within 20 days.
Okay. Good.
So I don't know where they're getting their numbers from. Again, we've been talking to them for months. Never heard this before. So I don't think that's an excuse either.
Okay. And it was the same on the other one, like the formal site development permits and...
Right.
The other one about this resubmital pack, resubmital package? All those were within like 95%?
Right. So let me, let me tell you what happens.
Okay.
What happens is that their engineers and their advisors get pressed because they're so busy, and they submit incomplete applications. Sometimes they, they submit complete junk, and we have to turn them back to them and say they're incomplete. They want to count the time, they want to start the clock when they submit the junk. That's not fair. We always look for ways to improve our service. We have been. We're on top of it. But I just, you need to understand that context here when you, when you hear those kind of comments.
Okay. I do think, though, it might be important as we move forward to use this as a metric, member evidence base. We need to make sure that we're delivering services, which we are, and you said we are, but...
We keep track of metrics.
And we keep track of them.
You can see them anytime you want.
And make sure that, and I think we always ask for permits and, and numbers, and I think we get them, so it was good to know. Thank you very much. The other question is, what's the difference between 80% and 90%? Like...
It would be your perception of what is good policy for the county. In terms of the cost, if we're talking about a $1.7 million shortfall, 10%, that is $170,000.
Okay. So what you recommended in here was 80% of the true cost?
About 80, close to that, 88, I thought, but...
I thought it was 72.
72 is where you are today. We had recommended some increases, but we didn't put the increases to 100% because precisely there were areas where we recognized that the difference between cost and price was, was much larger than in most cases, and in those cases, we hesitated to say right now to go to the max. Planning commission staff said, "Could we do it over three years?" That was, or, planning, not staff, planning commissioners asked that this be phased in over three years? If that's an option for you to consider, the only thing we would say is, you know, we don't have a crystal ball for when the economy is going to cycle up and down. I don't think it's a great idea to raise prices when the economy is down. And if you go three years out, I don't know whether we have a recession ahead of us or not, but if we do, committing to increase prices then is possibly not something you want to do.
Okay. So we were at 72%. Your recommendation in here was 80...
88, I think.
88%. Commissioner Kemp's motion was 90%. Oh, okay. I thought your was 80, so 2%.
We're converging.
I mean, really.
We're converging.
We're just rounding up.
Yeah.
So, okay, so let me ask you this, and then this is for, I was told in two different briefings that we could not make a motion today to adopt the new fees, that we had to come back with a resolution.
Well, if you make the motion to do that, we can bring the resolution and have it approved formally as a consent item.
Okay. So you would bring a resolution back to us?
Yes.
I think you need to have in front of you a written resolution that has the fee schedule in it. You can make a motion to adopt them today, subject to us bringing back the actual resolutions so that everyone then knows they have in front of them what the fee schedule is, there's no confusion. That's, I think, what we're saying.
So I guess I'll ask Commissioner Kemp, would you kind of maybe put a clarification word in there that we adopt a resolution to increase the fees?
Yes.
You can remove your motion, then state a new one.
I, I might need to point out at this point that in doing a cost study, sometimes we find current prices are higher than actual cost. In our recommendation, in those cases, is to reduce your prices so that you don't charge more than cost. I think Florida statutes don't want to see prices north of cost. So our numbers that we've showed, shown you are net. We are recommending some price decreases for services where we found that they nowadays cost less than the current price.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, are you with the drawing in motion?
I can withdraw my motion. I guess I have to have the second withdrawn. A resolution...
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Smith, are you with the...
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp has withdrawn her motion. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize for motion?
I'd like to make it a resolution at 90% with the reductions appropriately, as you have noted. I'd also, as long as I'm withdrawing, I'd like to do three years, a three-year review as opposed to a five-year review. That's, seems like it wouldn't impact as much as Commissioner Smith said.
One second.
That, by the way, has been the practice of Manatee County, and I've said to them, you know, "I appreciate the business, but you have, you're having me back more often than most. Why?" And they said, "Because when we find that the cost is much higher than price, there's hesitation to act on it. If we do this more often, it, it's easier for everybody to accept."
Thank you. I just thought after 30 years, five years would be way better, but I'll, I'll go with best, good practice.
Mr. White, you recognize?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I wasn't quite done.
Oh, you're not, when are you going to get done? Remember what I said, though.
Oh, I apologize. I, I just wanted to make a final comment because I, I always want to be very careful when we implement any increases so that we understand what the unintended consequence could be. Right now, Pasco, all the other surrounding counties are very high, so people want to develop here, and we have actually gotten a boost in our property tax revenues because of new development. I get that, okay? And we've been able, you know, to expand our infrastructure, do some things, not at quite the level we need to keep up with the need, but I think we're able to do that. But I, I think we have to be very mindful of the small business guy. I'm really concerned about the level of increases for the small business guy and how it's going to affect them, and I don't want to implement any fee increases that will drive somebody out of business. So I guess I, I'm going to make a subsequent motion after this one is disposed of, and also that we look at waiving the fees for developers that want to implement affordable housing in their project. I think that this is very important for us moving forward. If we're going to raise these fees and if we're going to get a lot done, then I think we need to take care of some other business at the same time, and I do think it's important. But I am concerned about the small business owner, and I don't know who is in the audience that can help address that. Maybe if we have a tiered level, or what can we do to help the small business guy? Do you have recommendations?
I have an idea on that, and I work with City of Miami Beach on this. They had the same concern. They don't wish to drive anybody out, and they don't wish to be so burdensome to the point that the fees are such a huge percent of total project cost. So let's look at this. We're talking about a $1.7 million shortfall relative to the development in Hillsborough County in here. My belief, this is my opinion, this is not a fact, my belief is that $1.7 million of additional cost, which by the way, I didn't even recommend you go that high, as an additional cost to development in Hillsborough County in a year, probably doesn't, as a general statement, overburden anybody. But what the Miami Beach discussion was, was to the extent that a fee is a, is a demonstrably high percentage of total project cost, that you could consider that and come up with some kind of statement that we would never want the fee to be more than X percent of the total cost of a project under a certain level. Say a million-dollar project, we would not want the fee to be more than some percent of your total project cost. How you're going to verify those costs is difficult, but A, the first statement, I would question globally whether the amount of money we're talking about here is going to depress anybody's desire to build here. But upon cause, if somebody can say, "My project is, is just this big, you know, and your fee is this big, you know, can I get some relief?" Well, let's talk about it. You could, you could grant the director power to make waivers in cases of duress.
Okay. So this is interesting. So we're going to have the county attorney's office put a resolution together. We don't quite have some language here to give to you yet to help the small business guy. So I'll come back after we dispose of your motion, Commissioner Kemp, and direct staff to work with our consultant here to come up with the proper language that would help the small business owner going forward. And I'm going to put the waiver fees in, too. So I, I'm really, I was for phasing them process. I'll be honest with you all, I think we could implement 60% now and evaluate it in a year and come back. I, I keep hearing we're going to be in a slight recession at the end of '20, but I think, you know, I just, I'm, I'm afraid we're going to just price ourselves out of the market altogether. But I, I get, when I look at the numbers and I see us recovering costs, but anyway, you know, I think we, the votes are already here to go ahead and move forward, so, but we'll do these other two things and hopefully it'll help. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. White, you recognize?
Thank you. I, I think we all need, I know that these fees need to increase if for any other reason for an inflationary factor. It's, it's been so long. I don't like the fact that we're subsidizing, you know, where, where these fees should be taking care of the costs. Frankly, I do want to see the development community get a fair shake. You know, I'll, I'll state for the record that, that I'm, you know, often, that, that our stand, my stances sometimes, you know, are met with disagreement from the development community, but I'm a reasonable guy and, and, and always want to see them have the opportunity to get a fair shake. Mr. Merrill, you know, I, I don't know what can be solved or settled with communications over the next two to four weeks or however long it's going to take. next two to four weeks, or however long it's going to take to bring a draft resolution back, but, you know, I would like to see, you know, those communications take place, and see if there's any way that we can iron out some of the issues here that are being posed, or at least perceived issues. With respect to what's going to happen with the fees, and also with level of service, I've heard you loud and clear, and I hear what you're saying about metrics, but I do sense, though, that some further communication should take place.
Okay. I'm still not sure what that, how that translates into the resolution for the fees.
I'm not sure either. I know that I have had some concerns raised about the fee structure itself, to Commissioner Merman's point, about what that might mean for a small-sized developer, or builder, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, I don't know what can be solved, if anything will be solved, but I would like to see some ongoing communication. Ms. Beck, I just want to just confirm with you, the county attorney's interpretation of the motion, my interpretation is that we are, if this passes today, that we're directing staff to bring a draft resolution back to the board for a vote, and it would be adopted at that time. The fees would be adopted at that time.
That's how I understand it, and obviously, the point would be to see it all in writing, everything gathered together, so that you can look at it holistically.
Got it. I'm going to support the motion on the floor. I mean, we have to get something in front of us as a starting point, but I would like to see some ongoing communication between staff and the development community. And Ms. Beck, when do you anticipate that's likely to come back?
I believe we could bring it back at your next board meeting, unless there's some unanticipated issue, but that would be our intent.
If I may make one suggestion, if you approve higher fees, the department needs to get those fees into its website and forms, so you might want to give them a little window to make those changes, once they know that it's approved.
Okay.
Before we get to the second round of questions, because I see a lot of people in the queue again, your recommendation of increases was, how much?
A million.
No, no, percentage-wise?
About sixteen percent.
I'm sorry?
Going up from seventy-two to about eighty-eight percent.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Has, have we, have we been, talking about communications and all that, have we sat down with our staff, or your staff, Mr. Merrill, or someone, staff, Ms. Kaski, or MP, or Planning Commission, with the representatives from the industry to talk to them about this? Have we done that?
Yes. We've had stakeholder meetings.
We've had stakeholder meetings.
We've had a number of conversations. This is not new information for them.
Okay.
And frankly, you know, I don't know, we'll have the conversations, but if, you know, if this, if where this is headed is that Adam Gormley's going to be the one to make decisions about whether a small business is making money is going to be a failure. There's no way for me, or for Adam Gormley, to determine whether a particular developer's making money. We don't have the benefit of looking at their financial statements, we don't have the benefit of knowing their cost structure or their margins, and what we'll be faced with is a parade of people coming in saying, we're losing money, we're losing money, we're losing money. I'm just going to tell you right now, that's a failure up front. We should not be setting fees based on the profitability, or expected profitability, or of any given developer. Just because you're a small developer, builder, doesn't mean you're not making money. I mean, that's not an argument. You know, we will look at other options, we can look at other things, but to put that kind of responsibility on Adam, or me, is not going to end up where you think it's going to end up. It's going to make things worse. You'll have a parade of people in front of you, saying, staff isn't listening, we're small, we're being hurt, we have no way to tell, on any individual home they build, or on their annual performance, we have no way to tell.
Point one, second, let me ask another question, then, a follow-up. So therefore, stakeholders knew in advance that this will be coming to us today, and the possibility that we might be at least looking at eighty-eight percent increase, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So all those emails I got yesterday, they, those stakeholders knew this was coming up?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you for your clarifications, Mr. Merrill. I think it's really important. I also will remind this commission, or anyone else, that when I came here and started going through that research, and looking at what, the history of it, and the fact that it hadn't been raised since 1987, and the comp fees, since it was instituted, I also found a study that had been done in 2016, just before I got on the commission, had been brought as far as the Planning Commission, which recommended nearly as much in increases at that time, and there had been several stakeholder meetings at that time, with actually very little apparent interest, and a pretty wide acceptance, it looked like, of those increases as being reasonable. The, you know, I actually had some concerns about this, and asked about, in terms of waivers or hardships, but the fact of the matter is, they're paying these fees in other places, they're paying them in Manatee, and Pasco, and if that makes them move projects to those places, maybe that's a better, maybe that's a better outcome, if we're, if our mobility fees, as we have them, if everything else, if growth isn't paying for itself, because we are not doing our job, and we're foisting it on the taxpayers to subsidize it, that's just not a good business plan, that's not what we should be doing. And I also have, of course, want to, you know, think about affordable housing, but I don't want that to become a loophole for not paying for fees, or, you know, I want to make sure that anything we do in terms of affordable housing is something that's well-considered, and makes sense, in terms of our overall scheme of things. So, again, I'm really pleased with what we have here. I actually think it's pretty modest. It's still less, still less than Manatee and Pasco Counties, from what I, my memory was of looking at their fees, in fact, considerably less. And I don't see any reason why we should be bargain basement kind of application fees here. And this is simply the fees. This isn't even the mobility impact fees, or anything like this. This is just the fee for an application, which is just such a small part of a project.
Mr. Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. In line with what much has been said, I do have, do appreciate the idea of going to three years. Our market cycles have actually shortened over the decades with more information available, our market cycles are cycling a lot faster, so a three-year review seems to make more sense. Also in line of that, I have some concerns about the impact it would have on builders that are interested in building in the area, in the affordable area space, not just workforce, but affordable area space. Where possible, we can create a cohesive program that includes some incentive for building affordable housing, which we are desperately in need of. I think it's critically important, and those builders that are, that are able to help us work within the guidelines of our comprehensive plan, in order to allow us to create some connectivity in the communities, there are ways that we can find a better outcome. And if, if looking at a plan that actually achieves the outcome of our long-term goals, as far as how we grow, can be a way of making that discernment, then maybe that would be another way of looking at it, rather than profitability as being a guideline that we can't follow. But if it serves the goal of our, of our growth plan, if it helps us provide additional affordable housing, not workforce housing, affordable housing, as a means, either through density bonuses or other tools, I'd look forward to seeing that as being part of our fee structure, not only in the planning stages, but also as what, in the impact fee conversations that we do later. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill, you're in the queue. Do you have any further comments? Mr. Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll try and be brief. I wasn't planning on saying too much on this issue today, but found myself writing down all kinds of notes, so, but I'll, I'll be brief. The fees certainly need to be addressed, and I support that, but let's be honest, these fee increases are by and large pass-throughs, they're not absorbed. And so, I share Commissioner Overman's concerns, that this could potentially negatively impact our affordable housing efforts, so I will support any consideration that would address or prevent these concerns from occurring. I will say, in my time in office, that I believe overall, there have been significant improvement with our service levels. I certainly believe that. As Mike said, because I personally witnessed a couple of these, there have been issues with deficient submittals, based on faulty engineering work, and I agree with that, because I've seen a couple of those myself. At the same time, though, I will say, I do agree with Ms. Motzinger and TPBA, that there should be a nexus between fee increases and the levels of service. Just yesterday, I spoke with a builder that had no idea we were even having this discussion, and he was complaining about the review process, and the comment time, and he was saying forty, fifty, hundred days. Now, he may very well be in that five percent, he may have had faulty engineering, I haven't gotten into that, that degree of looking at it, but just yesterday, and this builder didn't even know we were having this discussion. So I do want to ensure that our review levels and permit approvals occur as quickly as is reasonable. You know, in all areas, facets of county government, we can always improve and look to work on our service level, and if hiring a few people will make a difference, then I certainly support that. Time is money. Two last things. I know in the past, with fee increases, and maybe this has been a number of years, we have initiated a phasing-in approach. Perhaps that's something that we should consider, to soften the blow, if you will. And my last comment, this is, again, I agree with Mike, at least for me, it's not a small business, or if the business is making money, it's not that issue, but I do think it could possibly be a big impact on the individual landowner that's looking to build something. For them, it's not a pass-through, they're the ones that are going to be absorbing it. So, I don't know if there's any areas that we can consider, again, not to try and define small business, or if you're making money, but just on an individual basis, we can work on something there, I think there may be merit with that. So that's something that I'll look, I'll be looking into in more detail, when it comes, when the resolution comes back. But I'm going to support moving forward today, but may need to tweak a few things, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to be recognized. I didn't feel like the affordable housing or anything should be in the resolution. I think that needs to stay clean, go. So, I wanted to just have a, if you could just, I'll press my button again, follow-up with me, so I can ask staff to come back to us with policies on those other issues we were talking about.
Okay. Before we vote, Ms. Beck or Mr. Merrill? Ms. Merrill, Ms. Beck, in the resolution, is there a possible way that we could put in staggering up to the ninety percent?
You mean a phase-in?
A phase-in, yeah.
You know, what we could do is bring back two versions, one that has a phase-in, and one that doesn't, that you could compare.
Okay.
One question, or one comment?
Well, let me, before I do that, do you need, you need amendment to the motion to do that?
I don't believe so. I think we can just bring back the two versions, if that's the board's pleasure. It would be, obviously, it's always helpful to clarify that with the motion, but...
Okay. I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner White, and make a substitute, make an amendment to the motion, that we bring back two resolutions, one with a ninety-eight percent increase, and one with a ninety percent increase, with some stabilization within that.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to amend by Commissioner Miller, second, and by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you're in the queue?
Well, I'm, for the follow-up, but I do support a phased-in approach.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, discussion of the amendment?
Yeah, just a question, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer, because I asked her off the record beforehand. I just want to ensure that when the resolution comes back, we have the flexibility, because it's not an ordinance, we're not advertising, I guess, that we have the flexibility to amend or to make changes, whether it's the phasing-in, or the individual person, we have that flexibility, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That's all I wanted to make sure, so, Smith.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I do not support the phasing-in, because as I said, if, like the Planning Commission suggested, say it's phased in over three years, all right, we're at ninety percent this year, we'll be at eighty-seven percent the next year, we'll be at eighty-seven percent the next year, as we're phasing, phasing this in, it's just, and then we're going to be reviewing it again in three years, according to this resolution, so that's, that's a better timeframe, I think, to be looking at these, not every year, changing up what the fees are year by year. So that's why I won't support that amendment.
Commissioner Smith, understand, we're not doing it right then, she's going to bring us back two versions, if you don't like the phasing-in, we don't do the phasing-in, we look at the other one. I just ask that we do, bring back at least two versions we can look at, that's what I'm asking.
Commissioner Miller's pleading with you to at least let the board get the information in front of us at the next meeting, but that's certainly going to be up to you and your vote.
Jesus, you're thinking like me, that's...
Commissioner Merman, you're back in the queue?
No, that's...
That's for the other issue. Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I, I agree, I just don't even, I understand, but I don't, I don't see any point in going even there, so I also wouldn't be supporting a phasing-in.
Okay, I think that's for the separate issue, so seeing no further discussion on the amendment, please record your votes. Here you are, Mr. Chairman.
Motion carried, five to two, with Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
Okay, we're back down in a minute. Motion, Commissioner Merman, you want to talk now? Okay. We're on the amended motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I guess I would like to ask staff to come back to the board with a report with recommendations on possible waiver of fees, waiver of development fees for any development that would be for affordable housing, and how that would look, as far as percentages of the development, et cetera. And then, to include in that, a report about the adoption of a policy concerning, again, mitigation of fees for situat, for, I guess it would, for situations where small business or a landowner might be negatively affected by the implementation of the fees.
Motion, white, Commissioner Merman is our second, second by Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no one wanting to speak on this in the queue, now we do. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
You know, I would, I would be supportive of bringing back some look at how to craft a waiver for affordable housing. I wonder if you could separate them, because I would support the look at affordable housing. I think that might offer a really clean, and a separate thing from, from what our administrator told us would be a much more complicated process of trying to work out how we could do. Remember, these are not all this whole full suite of impact fees, these are just the fees for application, so if, if those two could be separated, bringing them back...
It's just a report that would, on two different subjects, so I don't think, I mean, I can state that they individually report on each item.
And then we would have a choice of, of going forward with one, or the other, or both.
You always have a choice at this board.
Okay. All right, thanks for the explanation.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I had the same concern, just supportive of the affordable housing, the second part sounded too complex and difficult, but, thank you.
Mr. White, you recognize?
I'll move that we take this up by paragraph separately, in other words, the two issues separately.
I'll second.
That's a substitute motion?
I think that motion's in order when there's a main motion on the floor.
No, no, that has to be a substitute motion, because she didn't put that in her motion, so your motion to separate... so your motion to separate it has to be a substitute motion.
All right, I'll make a substitute motion that we separate the issues.
You know, can I just remove...
Excuse me, excuse me. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
I mean, I'll remove my motion, just restate a new motion. I mean, if there's four votes here to do that, I'll just say, report, I think I said this, but just report on, separate reports on a waiver of fees for affordable housing, and another separate report on the adoption of a policy concerning mitigation of fees for situations involving small businesses or landowners.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Merman, you just clarified another motion. You can't make another motion, because...
I know, I know that. I'm just saying, I, okay.
So the only way you can do that is Commissioner White has to remove his substitute motion.
As, yeah.
Go ahead.
As a courtesy, I'll remove the substitute motion and allow Commissioner Merman to withdraw and make that new motion.
So Commissioner White wants to withdraw his substitute motion. Commissioner Kemp, are you withdrawing your second?
Oh, I'm withdrawing.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, are you withdrawing your original motion?
I am.
Commissioner Hagan, you withdrawing your second. Commissioner Merman, you recognize for the motion?
Yes, that directs staff to do individual reports, one on the waiver of fees for affordable, waiver of development fees for affordable housing, and the second report would be the adoption of policy concerning mitigation of fees for situations involving small businesses or landowners.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman. I see no discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
The horse is dead.
When the horse is dead, get off.
All right, you have two remaining time certains, B-7 and B-8, both county auditor reports.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll be brief, I know you guys have a time crunch. B-7 was audit report number 363. This was an audit of the Aging Services in Home Food Services program. We looked at both the management controls for the department, as well as compliance with the third-party provider who administers the services. Of note in this report is that the overall rating for the department was a managed maturity level, which doesn't sound very exciting, but is above average for the ratings that we give for control maturity, so that's to Aging Services credit. We did make one recommendation to management, which they concurred with, and have created a corrective action plan. I'm available for questions, or ask that you accept the report.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Well, I mean, I was just going to ask, did you study, like, waitlists or anything like that?
The waitlist for the food services.
Food services.
Are you asking if we, like, bumped them against best practice? We did not.
Yes, okay. Thank you, we'll talk later. I think we should look at that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
B-8?
Item B-8 is audit report number 364, which was an audit of the use of overtime pay. This was an analysis of the overtime trends for the county and specific testing related to the top two business units for overtime use. We did make recommendations to both Public Works and Fire Rescue related to that testing. Management has concurred with those recommendations and has developed corrective action plans. We did not find any indication of misuse or abuse, and we do believe the controls in place are reasonable to mitigate that risk. I'm available for any questions you may have, and ask that you accept the report.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner White to approve item B-8. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thanks.
Mr. Merrill?
I assume you want to finish the rest of the agenda.
We have six items on the regular agenda. I think we can get that done, hopefully, hopefully, in 20 minutes or so.
It'll be quick. B-1, County Attorney's Office, well, maybe, quick. B-1?
Good morning, Board. Johanna Lundgren, Assistant County Attorney, County Attorney's Office, and I am returning to you for the second approval of the proposed amendment to the Board of County Commissioners' Rules of Order to establish procedures for Commissioner requests for withdrawal of items from the consent agenda for both regular and land use meetings, and also adopt some procedures for the consideration of withdrawn consent items during the land use meetings of the Board. As you did approve this amendment at the previous Board of County Commissioners meeting, this is simply the second required approval that would be necessary to make it effective pursuant to the Board's Rules of Order process. And I'm here if you have any questions. The only change was simply a basic cross-reference to refer to the fact that this change will not affect the ability of a Commissioner to abstain or cast a negative vote on a consent item pursuant to separate Rule 7 of the Rules of Order. So if you have any questions...
This is item I...
Never mind.
Thank you. This is an item I brought forth that we discussed last meeting, so if you don't mind, Commissioner White, I'm going to move the item.
Yes, sir.
To the chair, because I think Commissioner Kemp is in the queue. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
I can't second.
You can't second. Okay. Commissioner Kemp's in the queue.
Thank you. I just want to make an amendment. And I know it requires a supermajority, five, to move it forward. I'll make an amendment to have four approved, just like you would on a regular agenda. That is, if something, if somebody wants to pull or vote no on consent, in order for them to talk about it or have it presented, they have to have five commissioners. I don't see any reason to have it be a supermajority, I'd just like to move it to four.
Second.
There's a motion to amend by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no, what, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, the reason I agree with that is, is that items on consent would only take four votes to pass, so it just seems like a simple thing to make sure that if you're going to pull an item, it wouldn't take a supermajority to do what a simple majority would be required of to pass. It's just, it seems logical to me.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Merman, this is your item, I'm going to defer to you for your input on what you think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't see a need to change the rule of five at this particular point in time. I mean, what's the need to do that? I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we'd even do that. I think we need to leave it as it is. We're simply basically saying, in this item, is that you have to have a certain time period and let the rest of the commissioners know when you pull a consent agenda item. It's not moving to earth. It's just a simple procedure that we're putting in place to move a consent agenda item. We're not trying to stop anyone from pulling anything from a consent agenda item, that was referenced the last meeting we had. So I don't think we need to move it or change it to four votes. I would ask that you vote against the motion, the amendment.
Okay, Commissioner Merman.
I was going to defer to Commissioner Miller, and I agree with your comments. Thank you.
And I'll just close by saying that I know that Commissioner Miller put a lot of work into this, and I'm going to be respectful of that, and not support the motion to amend. Seeing no further discussion, this will be recording your vote on the motion to amend.
Four votes instead of five.
Motion failed, with Commissioner Hagan, Miller, Merman, Overman, and White voting no.
And, so we will move to Commissioner Miller's original motion now, and it's seconded by...
Commissioner Merman.
Commissioner Merman. Okay, is there any comments? Seeing no discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one, with Commissioner Kemp voting no.
Mr. Merrill?
Three procurement items, B-4, 5, and 6.
Good morning, Scott Stormer, Procurement Services. Item B-4 is asking the Board to award and execute eight-month agreements with Stage Door 2 Incorporated, QRC Incorporated, and Pepper Contracting Services, at a total cost of $17,724,420.38, as the respective overall lowest responsible bidders for each specified service area for ongoing as-dead miscellaneous stormwater construction services throughout the county. A disadvantaged business enterprise, a participation goal of 10% or $1.7 million was established for the project, and the recommended vendors have committed to achieving the goal. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
That's a motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to approve item B-4. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B-5, oops, excuse me.
B-5.
Item B-5 is asking the Board to award and execute an agreement with the overall lowest response responsible bidder, Prince Contracting LLC, in the amount of $47,992,585, to extend Citrus Park Drive and connect Countryway Boulevard to Sheldon Road by adding a 2.73-mile section of four-lane disturbed, excuse me, divided urban road. A disadvantaged participation goal of 13% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving a higher goal of 13.1%, which represents about $6.2 million. It is important to note that we did have the two CIP project numbers on that project, and Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Mr. Overman and White. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Well, Commissioner Hagan, this goes back to you. You started it, and then I took over the district, but...
Just making sure you didn't forget.
Absolutely. Oh, no way. But this was a team effort, but boy, I tell you, this is something the residents up there are going to really, really enjoy, so thank you. Thank you to staff.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick comments, and I do appreciate Commissioner Merman's comments. This project's been going on so long, when I initially started it, it was anticipated to cost $20 million, and then when the economy was booming pre-recession, it went up to $120 million. So the fact that now we're down, back down to 48 is, I think, a bargain, so I'm glad we're moving forward on this. One thing I do want to point out, though, at the time, there was some significant opposition from Fawn Ridge, and I literally brought in the initial rezoning map, long before I was on the board, but from Judy James, which showed the road on the map. It was called Gun Highway Extension, but it was on there. But as a result of that, I was able to win approval from the board for some significant mitigation, like trees and shrubs, and I see here, it says landscape medians, maybe it's in the backup, but I just want to ensure, it was a budgetary item. I don't remember the number back then, again, we're looking at 10, 12 years ago, but I want to ensure that in this project, there's some significant relief along the road to mitigate any noise concerns from the subdivision there. So with that, please move it forward.
Okay. Commissioner Merman?
Nope. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Hagan, I believe it was, to approve item B-5. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B-6.
Lastly, item B-6 is asking the Board to award and execute an agreement with the lowest response responsible bidder, Solar Impact Incorporated, in the amount of $1,491,688, for delivering installation of solar power systems at seven libraries throughout the county. In this case, there were no disadvantaged, no certified disadvantaged business enterprises or small business enterprises for components of specified goods, therefore no participation or goal was set aside. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
I have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I missed my opportunity to move it, but at any rate, the, I just wanted to say, I'm very thrilled, I've been working really hard to make sure that this happened. Thank you, Mr. Merrill, for moving it forward, and Mr. Horadell, Tom Fast, all those who have worked really hard in really starting to put, use solar on all of our buildings, look at best practices, energy efficiency, saving taxpayer dollars, and lowering our carbon footprint. It's something I want to really draw attention to, because I think the county is moving in a very great direction with this, and I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by, Commissioner Merman, yeah, Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to approve item B-6. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Merrill, thank you.
Mr. Merrill?
Thanks, Scott. F-1, appointments to Tampa Sports Authority.
We have one more today, the Tampa Sports Authority. Choose two. Commissioner Miller?
Number six and number seven.
Commissioner Kemp?
Six and seven.
Commissioner White? Six and seven. Commissioner Merman?
Six and seven.
Sorry, six and seven.
Commissioner Hagan?
Muniz, and I'm struggling on the next one. I'm not quite sure who I want to put.
Just say number seven.
I guess, I guess Scaglioni.
Commissioner Smith?
Six and seven.
Commissioner Overman?
I don't know, I just have to choose something else if I can get rid of that, and go to six and seven.
That will be Tony Muniz and Andy Scaglioni.
Motion confirmed. Motion by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner White, to confirm the appointments to the Sports Authority. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Oh, thank you.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
That just leaves your item, Commissioner Miller.
F-2 deals with the Wade Boggs Achievement, Athletic Achievement Program, but I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Hagan to let him make the motion.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Miller. I'm very proud to have supported this for, since its inception, probably back in '05, '06. It's a great award that recognizes the best talent, not only on the field, but also in the classroom, on the baseball field, and it's always a special meeting, and I'm always pleased to present the award if Commissioner Miller will allow me to do so, but I'm happy to move approval today.
Did you move? There's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Merman, to approve item F-2, and I would be honored to allow you to go ahead and present that award, because you've been doing it, and you want to play baseball in major leagues, but you're scared of the fastball. Further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
That concludes scheduled items, future issues, if any, future discussion items.
Any future issues, any future issues, gone, once, twice, gone, I see nobody else in the queue, so therefore we adjourn, we'll be back at 1:30 for the workshop.